Forty-eight cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas the city of Culver City supports our local businesses to maintain a sense of community, create jobs, and boost our local like public safety, senior services, after-school programs, street maintenance, streetlights, parks, and many more. And whereas the city has embraced the hashtag choose Culver, hashtag love local, hashtag buy local, shop local program. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday in support of local independent businesses. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Culver City hereby proclaims November 30th, 2024, dependent small businesses on November 30th and throughout the year. Date is this 11th day of November. Signed by myself, the Vice Mayor, and all council members. Would you like to hold it?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Culver City Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the C and Amazon and Apple, but the reality is that the vast majority of chamber members are small businesses. And it's the small businesses, as the mayor indicated, that are the lifeblood of the community.
All right. I will read the brief land acknowledgement. A longer one is posted in the back of the chamber. The oral statement of land acknowledgement. The city of Culver City formally acknowledges that the land we inhabit lingo people, past, present, and future, and recognizes their enduring connection to this land as its original caretakers. We are committed to supporting and uplifting the Gabriolino people and to fostering a deeper understanding and respecting and caring for this land. The city affirms its support for the rights of these indigenous communities and for the preservation of their cultural legacies. And there is no report on action taken in closed session. We are going to move now to community announcements. Councilmember Vera.
It's our privilege to have you in our space, and thank you so much for everyone who has served, including our first responders. I'd like to say thank you to the Exchange Club. I think most of us went to, all of us, I think, to the Exchange Club's event over at Vets. Great turnout, and it was in honor of women who served, that various women go our Culver City Fire Department Strike Team, XLA 1075A. I'm glad that we all returned safely, and thank you, you all, for your service on the mountain fire in Ventura. Yeah. Big hand.
I also want to add that on the Vets, Veterans Association event, that it was impressive stories about women who has been involved in our armed services over the years. So I believe there's going to be a video, there's going to be fantastic women who had done some extraordinary actions during different time and different wars. Thank you.
Councilmember Puzan.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Culver City is honored to welcome the tent from November 14th through the 20th, and you can go to asianworldfilmfest.org to learn more about the movies and the schedule. Also, November is National Adopt a Senior Pet Month, so most senior pets end up at the shelter of no fault of their own. Many of them were once the full joys of my life. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Speaker.
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed the Veterans Day ceremony event on Saturday. I was actually doing another event at Baldwin Hill Scenic Overlook where we were doing trail remediation, several hundred feet of trail. It was getting a little dangerous from the past couple winters of heavy rains and definitely some ankle turning opportunities, and we corrected that, and it was a great day. So I'm sorry to miss that. I also want to shout out for veterans, the families of military service people who, you know, are overseas and in foreign lands. It's a difficult job being especially a wife or husband of a really appreciate the families as well. And I just, I feel I have to comment on the reason why myself and my colleagues stepped out of the chamber during the presentation for New Earth, because I kind of have to defend it. I think that the goal of New Earth contract with our, with our school district, and when several parents spoke out about questions they had about their performance, New Earth hired a attorney to, you know, enter into a campaign of silence and intimidation, and I had a lot, all of us had emails from those parents frustrated by that, and ultimately the contract was terminated, and now the school district is being sued by New Earth. And I agree that it is poignant. Thank you.
Thank you all for all the recognitions, and just to, you know, just lift up again what I mentioned before. I chose to celebrate the 20 years of New Earth. We have celebrated businesses that have had issues with labor. We have celebrated folks who have been in, you know, there are reasons why are all bigger than our mistakes, and that, you know, some people believe that, you know, we can celebrate the good. And in the spirit of celebrating the good and the totality of the circumstances, I thought it was really important to acknowledge a Black and Brown-led nonprofit that is focused on supporting diversionary and justice-impacted young folks. In my day job, I work at Children's Defense Fund. There really is not a lot of folks doing the work that New Earth does. We are, as the city, are no strangers to lawsuits and things that happen, and I'll let that take care of itself, and that's no comment on any active, past, present, or in the future litigation of any person or entity or business we have celebrated in the past, this year, or in prior years. So, nation. I do want to lift up the fact that it is also Native American History Month, so this month and every month, we want to celebrate the ingenuity, culture, and resilience of Native communities, and the First Nations encourage us to celebrate by supporting Native art. We went blank. The Walkin' Rollers are doing an activation around Ruby Bridges Day, I believe it's on the 14th, and so they're encouraging all of our schools and young people to walk to school. Bridges Walk to School Day encourages young people to stand up to racism and bullying and make positive changes in their own community. So I wanted to uplift that. Hopefully, folks in the district and beyond will participate in Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. The fact that Councilmember Puzan and myself hosted a healing space for neighbors who might be having a hard time in the wake of some of the election results. Again, we won't comment on that, but I do think it's important that we take care of each other in this time. A lot of folks are hurting, a lot of folks are feeling unseen. Women in particular, we belong to one another, something I say up here a lot, and I hope that in the spirit of, you know, we're in for some interesting times moving forward, and I hope that as we move forward, we continue to support one another and really move towards seeing one another and move toward more belonging in this community because it is sorely missing and needed. So, thank you so much for that time, and does staff or committees, commissioner boards have any additional updates or information items? Thank you.
We have Fire Chief, there you are, Baum.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. My name is Roger Braum, and I'm the Assistant Fire Chief for the Fire Department here. I'm here this evening to apprise you of some of the heroic and compassionate work done by members of a strike team that recently returned from the mountain fire in Ventura County. The XLA 1075 Alpha Strike Team was led by Los Angeles City. They were dispatched on the morning of Wednesday, November 6th, and by that afternoon, XLA 1075 was actively engaged in aggressive firefighting in the neighborhoods of Camarillo. They saved several homes from destruction by direct attack on actively burning homes and also the hazard mitigation. The following operational period was special for our crews as they were actively engaged with residents of the community who were returning to find that their homes had burned. With incredible compassion, our crews would dig through the rubble, they found a safe, a jewelry box, and a wedding photo album of a couple that were 90 years old and had recently celebrated, I think, their 60th engine. They folded the damage flag and presented it to the homeowners with condolences for their loss. Battalion Chief Voorhees, who was the strike team leader trainee, said that moment was incredibly moving. Finally, I'd like to quote from an email that Chief Voorhees had sent me while he was on the strike team, and I quote, "I'm incredibly proud of the men and women of Strike Team XLA 1075 Alpha."
Thank you. And that was the last item from staff, and I just wanted to mention as we start the meeting that consent item C6 has been pulled from the agenda, so that will not be heard this evening.
So we're going to move now to...
And as we set up for the joint public comment, I will read a statement regarding hate speech based in the city and in these chambers where members of our community feel included and And we have over 20 speakers, so the time limit will be a minute and a half per person.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call our first 10 speakers. Michael Kope, Al the Zionist, Dr. Luther Henderson, Mariah Fontaine, Mariah Beg, Steve Siegel, Christian May Suzuki, Polly Stenberg, Carolyn Labuser, and Melissa Sanders. Our first speaker is Michael Kope.
Good evening, y'all, and congratulations to you two for winning reelection, if that's a good thing. I think it's a real trial for all of you to be serving here, and you don't get paid enough for all the time you put in. As you all know, I'm one of the people, one of the individuals, we have a no-organized effort trying to fight the gigantic building that's planned for Sawtelle and Culver Boulevard, trying to do it with all the proper procedures, et cetera. And when we spoke with you guys, I think four of us met with Mr. Vera, I met individually with a couple of you, and three of you met, three of us met with another one. We all said, and I think you all agreed individually, that the developers have the right to build what's legally allowable, but they should be made to dot every i, cross every t. And that goes similarly, of course, for the Culver City bureaucracy. The fact that that hasn't happened was a shock to me, but something we've been dealing with now since January, in January, and I brought along seven packets here, one for the city clerk, one for each of you council members, and I think you, are you Mr. Nakbar?
Yes.
Yes, one for you as well, because it's not personal, it's professional. Of materials that most of you saw back in January, 10 months ago. We brought them to Emily Stadnicki over there, she didn't do anything. Emily Stadnicki is not a villain. The fact that I'm engaged right now with email with her is specific to a, she's become the hatchet woman for Mark Munzer over there. It's not her fault, but she's the one who's presenting incorrect facts, and so I have to engage with her. She's not a villain. Neither is Mr. Nakbar. He should do a better job of governing the departments there, but he's not a villain. The bad actor here is the head of the Planning Department, who has absolute contempt for the residents and for the rules he's supposed to enforce concerning community meetings, and for y'all who instituted those rules. It's a 17-year project that has been here. And as you know, if you saw the materials that I provided to you about a month ago, my interactions with Mr. Evangello, he finally admitted that I was entirely correct, it was a very civil but direct exchange. There's two things that need to happen. The Planning Department needs to send an apology to each of those 60 people who trusted them and put in complaints saying, "We didn't get our notification." They've been completely ignored. It's just so unprofessional, even a smarmy little "Thanks for writing," number one. Number two, 10 months later, the developer needs to have a letter from Culver City saying, "You didn't notify properly, you didn't identify yourself properly, we still do not know who the developer is, and so you should do a properly scheduled community meeting." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Al the Zionist.
I would like to congratulate councilmembers Albert Vera and Yasmin Imani-McMoran for your real, on your reelection. It was a breath of fresh air to see that the voters of Culver City decided to reject the disgusting and despicable racism and antisemitism that has been filling these council chambers with calls for a resolution for a fake ceasefire promoted by the racist pro-Hamas antisemites, along with their self-loathing Jews-for-Hamas allies. These calls for a ceasefire are disguising the true intention of the antisemites, which is to allow Hamas to regroup and rebuild so they could murder and rape all seven and a half million Jews who live in the Jewish homeland. Rather than agendize a resolution for a fake ceasefire, I think it's time to agendize a resolution to provide more aid to Israel. There are three reasons to give more aid to Israel. First, whenever we give aid to Israel, the money must be spent here in the good old U.S.A., which creates good-paying American jobs. Second, Israel tests for us in real battlefield conditions the advanced weapon systems that we develop, so this helps improve the weapons that we give our own soldiers to use. Third, and most importantly, the racist pro-Hamas antisemites have already said that Hamas is coming, and the goal is to burn America. So let's let Israel finish the job and of destroying Hamas. Let's stand with Israel and against the despicable, demented, and deplorable racist pro-Hamas antisemites.
Our next speaker is Dr. Luther Henderson.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable members of the city council. I invoke my First Amendment right to address this body under the United States Constitution of September 17, 1787. The American people have spoken. The November 5th election resulted in a historic, overwhelming landslide electoral college and popular vote victory for Donald J. Trump. The majority of the American people have made their voices heard, loud and clear. To be clear for those who are either ignorant or ill-informed, our government system is not a democracy, it is a constitutional republic. I encourage those whose vision was soundly rejected by the majority of the American people not to continually engage in specious rhetoric and actions vowing to fight the duly-elected national leadership. By continuing to do so, one can see the historical parallel of the Democrat Party's behavior after experiencing their loss in 1860 with the election of Abraham Lincoln, Democrat Party rhetoric that resulted in the Civil War. Then and now, one can see the minority's temptation to resort to sedition. Therefore, should one continue to espouse this fighting against the will of the American people, it could be interpreted as a clear and present danger to our constitutional republic. I respectfully request my fellow citizens to resist their Democrat Party's DNA, to fight the will of the people, and instead work to make America great again, put America first, accept the will of the people. God bless the United States of America and the veterans who have served to maintain our freedoms. Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm asking that the city agendize a resolution for a mutual and permanent ceasefire and immediate end to the violence in Palestine, Israel, Lebanon, Syria, and Yemen. This council's previous resolutions for Israel and Ukraine humanizes Israelis, Ukrainians, Jews, and their allies, while your silence and inaction reinforces the dehumanization of Palestinians, Arabs, Muslims, and their supporters. You fail to champion the common humanity of all peoples. It takes political will to imagine the poor, the unhoused, the enslaved, the colonized as equal human beings. You must declare it so. I ask that you stop justifying your inaction with the stories you tell yourself to make it okay. I have my hands full with potholes and stoplights. I am a Black woman, and I have much to burden. I'm saving my political capital for other issues. In the meantime, people are suffering and disillusioned by your stories. This is the playbook of oppressors and colonizers. We must move beyond. We must seek moral clarity and courage, political will to stop the endless bombing of innocents and the ethnic cleansing of northern Gaza, which has received no food, water, or medicine for 33 days. The U.N. reports that 70% of Palestinians killed by Israel were women and children, with children aged five through nine the largest group killed. The majority of Americans want a ceasefire and arms embargo. I imagine a progressive city like ours would want one also. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Maria Beg. Not seeing them in chamber or on webex. Our next speaker is Steve Siegel.
Thank you. Couple of things. First of all, I thank all the veterans that I know, and that's many, for their service to a man and woman, all wonderful people. We thank them very much. I'd like to ask the council to please consider some way, let's get creative, on informing the residents better on large initiatives coming to their neighborhood. I'm going to give an example that affects our neighborhood. Paddle tennis courts at Alenda, so the Parks Department has had many meetings, I guess, they've had various meetings. And on Alenda, there are paddle tennis courts at Culver that are used by thousands of people, hundreds of thousands of matches are played per year. It's really quite a success, it's been there for 53 years at least. And what happened was, a group of neighbors close to the courts lobbied to have on the plans put something like another building that would go there. And the problem is, none of the other residents in the neighborhood were notified of that. And the Parks and Planning could say, "Well, you were notified of meetings." It's really not good enough, it never really seems to... There's one or two houses that are affected, there's noise, there is some noise, there is people playing paddle tennis or pickleball, but then you, when they moved in, there's no, there's no, there's no surprise there, and there's going to be a padded, the courts are going to be padded soon, hopefully that'll dampen the sound. But, so there's two issues. Number one, the rest of the neighborhood and all the players don't want the courts moved because it's a raging success and always has been. And the second thing is just, there must be a way to notify residents, because when no one knows what's going on, they're not necessarily encouraged to go to the meeting. And then to find out that a small group of homeowners...
Mr. Siegel, your highness, inspired.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Christian May Suzuki.
Good evening, city council members, city staff, and the Culver City public. My name is Christian May Suzuki, and for council members, I have interacted with you guys one time or another, talking about the various policies in the city as my, in my capacity as reporter. Now, while some of you may disagree on certain things, I think most of us agree on one thing in particular. This city needs a better, unbiased, and in-depth news publication for its residents. The city has had trouble really getting good reporting done in the city for a while, and it's left Culver City residents uninformed about the many things that go on in the city. That's why I am here today to announce that I am launching a new online news publication that focuses exclusively on Culver City called the Culver Crescent. The Crescent is a symbol of neutrality, is a symbol of wanting to help and having a duty to help, no matter your beliefs, your origins, or your ethnicity. And that's what I hope to bring to Culver City with Culver Crescent. I hope that I can earn your support and hopefully your subscription soon. Thank you all very much.
Our next speaker is Polly Stenberg, followed by Carolyn Labuser.
Good evening, council. My name is Polly Stenberg. Good to see you all again. I've introduced myself many times as a mom, and tonight I'm here with my two children, Siona and Levon. They're 12 years old and 10 years old. We are a proud Jewish Culver City family, speaking on behalf of all life, on behalf of the dignity and equity and equality, justice, and right to life of all people. We will not be divided. We will not be told that speaking out against the genocide of a people is antisemitic. I will not be told that I am self-loathing, and I'm going to ask you here tonight to please direct Iraq to hold a special meeting so that we can have a community conversation amongst all people. We belong to each other, as you said, Mayor McMoran. We belong to each other, we need each other, we cannot bear to be fractioned and fighting amongst one another. We have to lift up life, and the time is long past due for a discussion to be held. City clerk, please help to get this discussion agendized before the end of the year. Our children are watching us and are seeing us model that we can engage, that we can move forward, that all people have a right to life, that all children have a right to life, that it is not okay to bomb children anywhere. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Labuser, followed by Melissa Sanders. Not seeing them in chambers or online. Our next speaker is Melissa Sanders. Melissa, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. First, I will say thank you to our veterans, and thank you to Exchange Club in putting on the wonderful display of Vets every year. Since apparently we're not allowed to speak on recognition items, I don't know what kind of violations that holds, I guess I'll talk to the city attorney tomorrow. New Earth did none of what you said on our campuses. If they had had a shred of positive experience to our kids, none of us would have had to speak out. None of us would have to speak out to the point where I, myself, along with, I think, 10 of us, got cease and desist letters from a so-called lawyer that is now on their board. That attempt to intimidate and silence a group of people should have been unacceptable from the very beginning, but you just did a Kelly Kent, and instead of apologizing to the community that you represent, you apologized to New Earth. This is an organization that had a multimillion-dollar, multimillion, multi-year contract with LA County, who did such a poor job, the county canceled them, demanded half a million dollars back, they sued the county and lost. They are currently in the midst of many other problems. You're talking about an organization that didn't just have a few hiccups and problems, they have directly affected in every negative way possible your community.
Your time has expired. Our next speaker is Patrick Godinez, followed by Samia Banu. Our next speaker is Patrick Godinez, followed by Samia Banyo. Patrick, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
I address you now publicly as a concerned unhoused neighbor that calls Culver City home for almost a year in December. I wanted to express my thoughts on items involving a future affordable housing project for construction such as C2. I truly believe that these discussions should be held during the joint City Council and Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness meeting in the near future. I truly believe that the City Council should take a step back and look at the great accomplishments that have been built and start to refine from there in a more cost-effective way, and possibly adding some of the items that might not only increase management, but also give us a chance to receive funding. I also truly believe that we should refine the continuum of care and really define it, so our unhoused neighbors that are sheltered can move along the continuum to permanent housing and a better life for all of us. Thank you.
I think your next speaker is Samia Banyo.
City and Human Relations Advisory Committee, although today I'm speaking on my own initiative, and I basically just want to give a friendly reminder and request the City Council to please agendize as soon as possible this consideration of the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee's request to be able to hold their community conversation as soon as possible. So I hope you will agendize this consideration for the next, very next, City Council meeting and also approve this request. And I just want to iterate that this is not a conversation to discuss the specifics of the proposed ceasefire resolution by the members of the community, but rather to better understand the equity and human relation concerns that have come to light as a result of some members of the community wanting the ceasefire resolution to be passed. So please agendize the request by ERAC as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Marcy Vaughn, followed by Judy Sherman.
Good evening, mayor and council members. First off, I would like to thank the veterans for all of their service, and of course, our first responders. I would like to address New Earth. So New Earth is currently suing our school board, and I do not understand why we are commendating or giving a commendation to an organization who sent in people to work with our students that were not even licensed to work with our students. They helped maybe 40, supposedly worked with 40 kids during that entire school year, and did nothing for them. So I do not understand, especially coming from a place where the kids were having such a difficult time, the money would have been better spent hiring more counselors that were actually licensed to work with children and students. A second, I would like to remind everybody that on Thursday of next week, we will be discussing the plunge policies at 7:30 at the Senior Center. That will be the Parks and Rec... Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission meeting. So if you would like to come and talk to us about the plunge policies, we would love to have you there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judy Sherman, followed by Stephanie Sharp.
That was good timing on my part. Good evening, city council. There will be pure theater that will take place tonight during the public hearing, number three, regarding the approval of yet-only-one of the current proposals for housing being planned in Fox Hills. You, the public, will most likely witness the concerned inquiries about this project that the Planning Commission rubber-stamped, along with, of course, the blessing of city planners. Like this information is a newsflash to the City Council. A City Council who has done nearly nothing in terms of advocating for the Fox Hill community since they have had almost two years to amend the housing element to lower the density designation down from 100 units per acre, and direct planners and their handsomely-paid consultant to equitably distribute the state-required 3,341 units of housing the city has to have by 2029. Instead, they have done the most expedient thing, as predictably, developer proposals have thus far, what the tally told, almost 3,000 units with more to come most likely. You'll also probably hear about the specific plan for Fox Hills, thinking that this will reassure the community that this density will be addressed. They even got grant money to do this plan, but in fact, the city is creating this problem instead of preventing it. If these developments get approved, there will be much added pollution to Fox Hills. Are climate goals for the state really being addressed with this overdevelopment, which is part of the purpose of the grant money? I think not, as all building will only add greatly to the pollution in Fox...
Ms. Sherman, your time has expired. Our next speakers are Stephanie Sharp, Alice H., Jared Bailey, Ivanska Pagan, Hala Mohammed, Larry Sherwood, Tara Barakas, and Tom O'Neill. Our next speaker is Stephanie Sharp.
Hi. I'm Stephanie. I currently work at New Earth, and I have been participating with Culver City for Peace over the last few months. I am completely unaware as to the intensity of emotion, so processing that in this moment while also being very concerned. Here's the thing. I just really, I think that we all need to take a step toward the middle. We are all humans first and foremost. Regardless of how you feel about the organization that I work for, regardless of how you feel about global anything, we are humans, and all we're trying to do is help each other establish communication. So I am begging you to please put on the agenda for ERAC to have this meeting, which is just going to be a conversation about learning how to talk to each other and learning how to give one another the credit of being human. I am trying to tell you, I believe that we can be on each other's side while we disagree. I don't have to completely dismantle your fundamental identity.
Our next speaker is Alice H. Alice, you've been unmuted.
Oh. Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Council members Vera O'Brien and Poza express support for agendizing ERAC's request for this meeting on Gaza, and yet, it didn't happen. As a Culver City resident, as a mother, I'm deeply saddened and frustrated by the City Council's inaction. I try to divine why in the world this discussion earning its rightful place on the agenda is so difficult. We're not asking you to skip any meals, like the 30% of children under five years old who are currently suffering from acute malnutrition in Gaza. You all had your lunch today, I'm presuming. We're not asking you to listen to a child cry from the dizzying malaise of being hungry, or to tell a child to bite down on a blanket at night to distract them from the pain they feel from a severely empty stomach. 67 Gazan children per day have been killed since October 7th. We're not asking you to watch three of our CCUSD elementary school first-grade classrooms' worth of children die each day. You have clearly somehow shielded yourself from understanding the brutal killing fields and militarized starvation Palestinians are living through, despite us coming here, speaking out, and telling you. Daily, you are losing your electorate's trust and respect. All you have to do is agendize an already-approved request for ERAC's meeting. What are you afraid of? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jared Bailey, followed by Ivanska Pagan. Not seeing them in chamber or online. Our next speaker is Ivanska Pagan.
Major, Vice Major, and council members, please agendize ERAC's request to hold a special meeting regarding the humanitarian crisis in Gaza and its impact on our community. Well, kindness day. I think it goes together with humanity, and I don't think we get to choose what group here and there and what part of the world we do not include. Everybody deserves peace. Everybody, everybody deserves a life. And I kind of understand how we can live our lives with dreams, our families with dreams, and growing up, and yet, we take it away from others. And again, well, kindness day includes everybody in the world, and we shouldn't be picking what group not to include. Please, ceasefire is very important, and we shouldn't be supporting all these funds to a country to keep a genocide going on. And again, today's U.S. veterans, we shouldn't be sending more funds for a war, a senseless war, or a genocide. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hala Mohammed, followed by Larry Sherwood. Hala, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate Mayor Lesmin McMorrin and Council Member Vera for your reelection. And of course, we're taking a moment to remember veterans who gave their lives in service for a revolution. I'm kind of lost for words, so I will just read this poem. It's dedicated to all the children who have been orphaned, and it's also dedicated to all the mothers who feel the pain of all the children. The title is "When I Leave This Place." If I wasn't here, my love, if I suddenly was to leave without notice, a kiss, some parting words, you mean everything to me. It's hard to imagine with you right now, the beating of my heart, my soul, my center, my little shadow, that we could ever be apart. And when I think of my life before a time that I met you, I wonder if leaving will feel the same. Will I again become someone new? My proudest moment was meeting you. My heart song is your laughter. I hardly remember life before, and you mostly remember after. My bones and my body know you from the moment you started to grow.
Hala, your time has expired.
If I suddenly was to go. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Larry Sherwood. Mr.... Oh, unmuted.
I just... The chip sacks, a lot of that's going to be...
Mr. Howard?
A lot of emergency coddings and...
Mr. Sherwood? Are you able to hear us in the council chamber?
We have to police this issue going into the next chamber.
Our next speaker is Tom O'Neill, followed by Maria Beg.
Good evening, council members. Over the last few months, the world has taken a very sharp turn. Assaults on Israel on October 7th were simply the beginning of international assault on the Western world and its values, which continues to today. Most obvious here in America, on college campuses, where Jewish students were driven into the library, often into libraries, which was a sort of poetry since Jews are the people of the book. Israel has been under assault for 75 years and has been routinely capitulated, or rather has routinely capitulated, to international pressure to stop when they're short of defeating their enemies. Israel has decided to do what any other nation in the world would do, and that is to pursue and defeat their enemies through unconditional surrender. Most obvious, our nation did the same in World War II. The assaults on Israel, little Satan, according to Iran, stand as a warning to ourselves, citizens of the great Satan. As goes Israel, so goes the United States of America. Thank you.
And we're going to circle back to Maria Beg. Mari, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for calling my name again. I apologize. I'm out of town on a family vacation, and so I can't be there in person. But, you know, I continue to call in because every meeting, even though I'm, you know, in St. Louis visiting my family, and I'm two hours ahead, so it's already almost 10 o'clock, I still call in, and I still come to every meeting because I'm so heartbroken and devastated every day over the genocide in Gaza. And I continue to wonder how Culver City, and especially this council, and really just the city in general, I think it goes beyond this council at this point, because the council did agree to agendize a conversation, and that's, I don't know, if city staff controls the agenda, or who controls the agenda, or what's going on, but why is it so hard for this city to have any type of acknowledgement for the pain and suffering of this community and acknowledgement of the genocide in Gaza? Like, I really don't, I truly, at this point, don't understand. Like, what is it? Is, do Palestinians in Culver City not matter? Do Arabs in Culver City not matter? Do Muslims in Culver City not matter? Do allies in Culver City not matter? Basically, anybody that is not standing with Israel and is against this genocide, we are just continuously ignored. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Jared Bailey. And our last speaker is Jared Bailey.
Good evening, council. I'm here because the last time I was here, we got three nodding heads to have an agenda on the books for tonight to direct ERAC to let us have a community conversation of healing and understanding, and that wasn't put on the agenda tonight. I'm not sure why, I don't have the answers. Maybe you do. But I am here to say, on my way in, I saw a sign that was like, no skating, no rollerblading, no biking, right outside the, right outside City Hall. And that got me thinking, this is like a prime place for like skateboarding and biking. But you built a skate park just up the street to give people a place to skate, and we've been asking you to give us a place to have our conversation, and for whatever reason you've just chosen not to, or you don't care, or I don't know why, but I feel like you have it within your power to give us our place to skate, and that's all we're asking for, just a conversation amongst the community moderated. Everybody gets to have their viewpoints heard and shared, and ERAC can do that. Please direct them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker, and this is just a reminder that anyone who signed up after we began will be called during the second portion of items not on the agenda.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to receive and file? A correspondence received by 3:00 PM tonight? I'm sorry, I'm speaking at the same volume. Can we have a motion, please?
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera and Councilmember Puzza seconds. The receivable filing of correspondence received by 3:00 PM this afternoon. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes, five ayes.
Thank you. We will take the order of the agenda as it's stated minus C6 as indicated by our city clerk. Moving on to our consent calendar, any items to pull from Councilmembers? Councilmember Vera?
C9, please.
Councilmember Erickson?
Nope.
Councilmember Puzza?
No, mayor.
Vice Mayor Abraham?
C12 and C13.
Do we have any comments on any of the consent items?
We do. We have speakers for C3 and C20.
And I wanted to ask a question on C7. So we can take them in order, should we start with C3?
Sure.
And if we can have a brief staff report and then hear from the speakers?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor, Tevis Barnes, Housing and Human Services Director. For the sake of the public, with me this evening is Assistant City Manager Jessie Mays. And what we'd like to do is, we prepared a presentation in the form of a PowerPoint, and we'd like to review that with the council and the public.
Project-based vouchers can be very complicated and a little bit confusing, and so we wanted to provide this opportunity for the public and the council to understand a little bit more of what this item is meant to do. The US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, provides funds to public housing agencies to administer housing choice voucher programs. The voucher program offers vouchers to individuals and families to help them afford safe, private housing. Culver City has its own housing agency, the Culver City Housing Authority, and you all are its board. HUD provides funds to our housing agency to distribute vouchers to individuals and families in Culver City. HUD monitors us to ensure we properly follow program rules. Next slide. HUD provides our housing authority with a set amount of funding each year. That funding is granted in the form of vouchers, which families can use to pay their rent. Each agency has a cap on the number of vouchers it has issued every year. Housing authorities can choose to give vouchers to help fund new affordable housing projects, rather than families and individuals. These vouchers are known as project-based vouchers. HUD caps the maximum percent of a housing agency's vouchers that can be converted to these project-based vouchers. The maximum percent is 20%, although HUD allows a housing agency to convert an additional 10% if the project meets certain criteria, such as serving the homeless. In Culver City, the 30% cap is the equivalent of 114 vouchers. Next slide. A city needs to get HUD approval to convert vouchers to project-based vouchers. HUD doesn't automatically approve the city's request. The process starts when a housing agency makes a request to HUD to convert vouchers to project-based vouchers. HUD evaluates the housing agency's current needs and projected future needs for voucher funding. HUD then approves the number of project-based vouchers a housing agency can give out, which can be a maximum of 20% or 30% if the project meets certain criteria. The difference between the number HUD approves and the maximum percentage is a reserve, which serves to ensure against future cost increases for individuals and families. HUD is cautious when approving converting vouchers to be converted to project-based vouchers. This is because, once given to a project, these vouchers remain tied to the project for 20 to 30 years, the duration of a housing assistance payment contract. The agency cannot pull them away from the project, and I'll note that that blue arrow should have said 20 to 30 years, not 55. HUD wants to avoid a situation where there's not sufficient funding for Culver City to pay the increasing rents of people using vouchers. As we know, rents in Los Angeles have historically increased significantly over time, so HUD wants to be sure the city has enough, that wants to be sure that the city's pot is enough to cover future cost increases. If that were to occur, some families and individuals may lose their vouchers because there's not enough funding to go around. Next slide. Knowing that there's interest in developing more affordable housing in the community, earlier this year, Culver City Housing Authority asked HUD for approval to convert vouchers to project-based vouchers. Culver City has never converted vouchers to project-based vouchers before, so staff asked HUD for approval to convert the maximum 30%, which is 114 vouchers. HUD evaluated our requests and only gave us permission to convert up to 50 vouchers to project-based vouchers. HUD's rationale for not allowing us to convert the maximum is that they do not think we will be able to meet our future obligations to existing voucher clients if we convert more than 50. HUD requires Culver City to use a Request for Proposals process to give out project-based vouchers. HUD has this rule to ensure transparency and ensure the vouchers are given to the best project or projects possible. The city puts the project-based vouchers out on the open market, and affordable housing developers are able to compete to win them. The city can award all or some of the vouchers to one or more developers. As you can see, the city cannot promise a set number of project-based vouchers to any developer, because number one, HUD controls the number of project-based vouchers the city can give out, and number two, the city must use an unbiased RFP process to distribute the vouchers to developers. The action before you tonight is to approve moving forward with the RFP for the project-based vouchers that we were granted approval for by HUD earlier this year. That concludes our staff report, and we are available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Can we move to comments in the public?
We have three speakers signed up, Jeanne Black, Anne Travallin, and Tara Barakis. Jeanne, you've been unmuted, go ahead.
I'm speaking tonight to support C3 regarding the Section 8 project-based vouchers. Nearly everyone recognizes the need for more affordable housing in Culver City. As we heard in the excellent panel presented by the Finance Advisory Committee last month, Culver City is years behind places like Santa Monica and West Hollywood, which have had dedicated affordable housing funds for many years. Culver City passed an affordable housing linkage fee in 2021, but that was in the middle of the pandemic, and commercial development pretty much shut down. So in the most recent report, that fund had $0 at the end of fiscal '23. Because Culver City doesn't have the funds to finance 100% affordable housing ourselves, we need to rely on developers to assemble the financing, and as you just heard in the presentation, one of the essential elements for a project to be financially feasible is its ability to obtain these HUD Section 8 project-based vouchers from the local housing authority. That's because these vouchers guarantee a revenue stream that enables the project to pay its mortgage. HUD requires this RFP process to issue the vouchers. I'm confused about why this request is only now coming to counsel, because I had understood that the Culver City Housing Authority had already committed project-based vouchers to Jubalo Village, the 100% affordable housing project planned for 4464 Sepulveda Boulevard. The church there has been working with Community Corporation of Santa Monica for more than five years, and this badly needed project is nearly ready to break ground, so I hope this process can proceed smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Travallin.
Good evening. I'm also here to talk about Jubalo Village, because I am a member and the trustee chair for Culver Palms United Methodist Church, Community Corp. of Santa Monica's partner in building this 95-unit housing building that all of you are aware of. We've been working on this for five years. We have applied for many funds. We received funds in August based on a promise from the city for 93 project-based vouchers. That was an important number, to push us to the front of building a building that this city needs very badly, and that we want to help with. We want to be part of the solution here in Culver City. We want this building to go up. We want these 95 units to happen, so that people have a permanent place to live, not a temporary one, in a perfect place to put it, along a bus route, on a major corridor, where they can embed themselves in the city and be good citizens. We can't do this without project-based vouchers, and I think you know that. Without them, it's going to be very hard to get this project built, and we are very close to being able to build it. We were hoping we could build it in January, but this whole project-based funding thing is putting the entire project in jeopardy, and we don't want that, and we don't think you want that. This has been part of the Culver City housing plan since 2019 when we started. So I'm not just asking, I'm begging you to pass this, because this is the pathway forward for affordable housing, for making Culver City a good place for everybody, and for taking care of some of the issues that go on with people being able to live in Culver That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tara Barakis.
Good evening, Mayor McMoran and members of the City Council. My name is Tara Barakis. I'm the Executive Director of Community Corp. We are the developer of Jubalo Village in partnership with Culver Palms United Methodist Church. I'd like to thank you for agendizing issuing the project-based voucher, NOFA. And as was just mentioned, and I'm sure you're aware, that the city's already given Jubalo Village a voucher commitment of 93 project-based vouchers. So it is confusing as to why now there were only allowed to talk about 50. I'm not really sure I understand that. And I will say that the shortfall of the 43 vouchers is catastrophic to the project. We went in to apply for tax credits from the state of California with the city's written commitment for 93 vouchers. Losing 43 vouchers is the equivalent of a $16 million shortfall. It's not something that can be made up unless we work together to figure out how to resolve it. We hope that the city will make good on its commitment to this project, which was reconfirmed before we accepted tax credits. If not, we will have to return the tax credits, and the project will not move forward. It will also punish Community Corp., because returning tax credits is penalized by the state of California, and it will also punish Culver Palms United Methodist Church, who has spent money already on the affordable housing project. So again, we hope to work with the city to resolve this issue. We're glad that this NOFA is being issued, and so we hope that that will proceed, and let's work together so we can make Jubalo Village a success. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Thank you. Does staff able to respond to some of the things that were left ahead?
I think it's important to mention that there's a current narrative that is structured with some erroneous information, that there was a promise of a certain number to a specific All correspondence was based upon that all, any allotment was conditional, and that we had to follow the HUD process. That was repeated and reiterated on numerous occasions.
Okay. Hearing what I just heard and hearing what you're stating, and the limitation of the 20% plus 10% that Assistant City Manager Mays spoke to earlier, where does that live? So it sounds like if the commitment of 95, or if there is no 95 vouchers, I'll remove the word commitment, but if there is not 95 vouchers, then the Jubalo Village won't move forward. So would the 50 vouchers just be in general, if someone in the future decided to build? Or what would that go to if this project, which it sounds like it won't go through, but if it doesn't go through, are they just on hand, or what happens?
A housing authority cannot distribute project-based vouchers without going through a competitive process, such as an RFP. So once the RFP is released, which it will be released this month, Community Corp. of Santa Monica, of course, is welcome to apply for those 50, and staff will continue to work with Community Corp. of Santa Monica and any other developer in helping them to identify funding resources for their projects.
So anyone can apply for the vouchers?
Anyone in the development community can apply for those vouchers.
If I'm remembering, where are we with our very low and low units in Culver City? I know we were low the last time there was reporting on those units, and I think that this project was included in that count, if I'm recalling correctly. Is that right?
I may have to call upon the Planning and Development Director, but it is my understanding that there are several thousand units in the pipeline that are designation as affordable.
But not very low, though, because I thought we had some severe gaps there.
It's my understanding that there are quite a few that are actually of the very low designation. Developers like the very low designation in a density bonus situation, because it allows for more units, but I'm going to let Director Munzer.
Thank you, Director Munzer. Thank you, Director Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Member, Members of City Council, Mark Munzer, Planning and Development Director. We do, Mayor, have some low and very low units that are in the Development Review Pipeline. We have approximately 500 affordable units that are part of the overall that are part of the overall number of the total number of overall units that we have proposed. So those vary in terms of moderate, low, very low. And some of them are not fully defined yet. And we'd have to do some more, you know, do a little bit more math and research to get you that exact number, but there are some in the pipeline.
Okay. And just for the sake of the conversation we're having about the vouchers, could folks in that 500 pile apply for these vouchers? Or is that a separate kind of scenario?
Any developer can apply for these vouchers. That is why HUD wants a competitive process. So we will do a public notice, and any developer can submit under this RFP. You will see in the report, there are threshold requirements. And you'll also see what we typically will use to measure the submitted proposals. So if a developer meets those threshold requirements, and if they do well with regards to how we will score, they have the opportunity to possibly be allotted those vouchers.
Thank you. I'm sure I have more questions at the end. But thank you for immediately answering those. And thank you, Director Munzer, for coming up and addressing the low or very low numbers. And just before you leave, just to clarify, the 500, we don't have online. They're all in development.
We have what's called an annual progress report that the council reviews every year by March and April. So we have had some that have been developed. But the 500 that, yes, that I was speaking to are in review and have not been approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Verran, do you have questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Erickson.
Oh, yeah, please. Yes, to understand this. We put in, as a city, $2 million in the project, and then we doubled that to $4 million, right? So we have $4 million in the project at this point?
That is correct, plus an additional $1 million that was provided by the state. So there's up to $5 million. It was the original funds came from the Low and Moderate Housing Asset Fund, which is old redevelopment money. And then the $1 million came from the state.
Okay. And of course, it's concerning that HUD doesn't agree with us. But, you know, that, yeah, it's concerning. But there is also, I also heard comments and things about the deal. So I'm wondering, how much is the church? It's their land, right? And so how much are they providing into the deal? Or are they selling the land and then, you know? Because I heard both sides. I'm just, would like to clarify that, so I understand it be sorted out.
So what we did is we brought in our city's financial analyst, which is Kaiser Marston Associates. And we asked him to review the performer provided by Community Corp. of Santa Monica. And it was during that time that we found out that there will be an acquisition from Community Corp. of Santa Monica from the church of the land. And if I don't have that correct, I believe the director from Community Corp. of Santa Monica can correct me. They are purchasing the land from the church.
Okay. But the church will have some facilities in there. Is that how the project? That's what I, you know, remember.
It's my understanding, from the proceeds that the church receives from Community Corp. of Santa Monica, they will use those proceeds to build their section of the project. That is my understanding.
Okay. Do we know how much they sell it for?
I believe it's $13.1 million.
Okay. I wonder if there's something to do there. But anyway, thank you for clarifying that.
Is there a member from the public that wanted to provide additional clarity on these questions? Or the Vice Mayor was mentioning or motioning something, so...
I can just clarify that we're not purchasing the land from Culver Palms. We are leasing it. And I'll also just clarify that we have a written commitment for 93 vouchers from the city, not 50.
When you say you're leasing it for $13 million over, what, 50 years or something?
Yes. Well, 99 years, yes.
99 years for $13 million something? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Pusen?
I have no comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor O'Brien?
I think Assistant City Attorney might want to speak to the written commitment comment, or no? I'm sorry. Assistant City Manager, excuse me, on the comment regarding written amendment?
That's just not true. I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't know if the, I think we've gone beyond the scope of the item, but I really want this project to succeed. I hope we can get creative in making that happen. But as far as approving this RFP, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. There's clearly just a bit of confusion happening. And so I really would encourage for staff to have additional conversations with this particular developer that's here this evening. I understand that we can't speak to the specifics of what's happening, but it is a little concerning that, you know, folks that have been involved in this, in this community for some time on a specific project are saying one thing, staff is saying another. And I trust that there will be some resolution, I hope, soon. We have a commitment to furthering fair housing. There is, you know, the number one concern that I heard at the doors was affordable housing. Folks, older adults, young folks, being concerned about the price of housing and being priced out of Culver City. So we, you know, we really have to, you know, do all that we can to support our neighbors, welcoming neighbors. So it sounds like in this scenario, there's only the 50 that are on the line. But I hope there are ways that we can do more to support, whether it's Section 8, other revenues, other resources to support capital A, low, very low housing. It's been a while since we got an update on those numbers. But I do recall the last time we did, they were very low. So encouraging to hear that there are some in the pipeline. But again, we just want to make sure that we're doing all that we can to support the production of affordable housing in our community. So on the table is this up to 50. So we will take that under advisement when we do the motion for consent. Thank you all for presenting and answering the questions. And thank you, those in the community, for sharing. It looks like next is C7.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. This is Dana Anderson, Human Resources Director. And I have Michelle Hamilton, our Senior Equity and Human Resources Manager. She'll give you a staff, a brief staff report on this item.
Thank you, Dana. Good evening, Honorable Mayor McMaurin, City Councilmembers, City Manager and City Attorney. As part of our continued effort to embed racial equity into our city's framework through current and future policies and procedures, along with structure and training, this evening's item extends the current contract with Keane's Independent Research in order for them to complete the second phase of the Racial Equity Action Plan. In summary, the action, the Racial Equity Action Plan, which we call the REAP, will serve as a roadmap to integrate racial equity into all facets of the city's operations, as well as its service delivery, with recommendations designed to improve outcomes for the diverse residents and staff of Culver City. Under Phase 2, this will include updating the scope of service to include Phase 2 tasks, updating the termination date to the conclusion of Phase 2 tasks, and also the request to increase the not-to-exceed project fees by an additional $63,530,000 for the preparation of the REAP. In terms of Phase 2 and what those items entail, those items include a robust community engagement that turns the REAP from the internal review that is going on now, where staff and our policies are being reviewed. And in Phase 2, it turns outward, conducting robust community engagement, collecting input from members of historically marginalized communities, and also leveraging existing city relationships with community organizations, as well as building new ones. And then, last but not least, developing a plan that is reflective of Culver City staff and community. And that concludes the report for Item C7. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I think, I think it's just me who wanted to find out more about this. I know we're going to receive a presentation from our consultants in the beginning of 2025. So I look forward to hearing what some of the feedbacks were from staff and, you know, whatever conclusions that are being made. My main question is, I'm looking at the connected Phase 2, trying to understand the additional timeline itself or what the finalized date is there.
So for Phase 2, the final date would extend into the end of 2025. The current Phase 1, Keane, I have to give it to them. They're moving more quickly than what we initially anticipated. They have reviewed over 5,000 pages of documents, including our city budgets, the general plan 2045. So they are ready to start with Phase 2, which will begin after the Phase 1 findings are reported to council in early 2025.
And I think that, Human Resources Director Dana Anderson, Mayor, I do think that this will move a little bit faster than the end of 2025. We should have more information once we present those findings and be able to present an updated timeline for the Racial Equity Action Plan, the document itself.
Thank you both. And this requires a budget adjustment. So did something change in the contract? Or was there any indication of the need shifting from at the outset when we engaged in the initial contract with them, with Keane?
So no, nothing changed on the initial RFP. We did request, we did request proposers to propose both Phase 1 and Phase 2. When we initially brought this to City Council, the initial funding was solely for Phase 1. Now that we're wrapping that up, this, this request is an amendment to proceed to start Phase 2. So initially, it's not necessarily, it is additional, but that's the way that the initial RFP was, and to do it into two different phases.
And things seem to be going really well, so I'm happy to hear that. And looking forward to the presentation in the spring. Oh, Vice Mayor?
Hi, thank you. I was just seeing what the Phase 2 scope is, and it's primarily focused on community engagement. I'm just wondering how we're going to go about that process to ensure that we, you know, gather the most voices in these historically marginalized communities.
So Vice Mayor O'Brien, there are several approaches, which we're also looking at expanding it as well. We did do some outreach to some community groups, including ERAC. We did do a citywide survey for both internal employees, as well as some of the former GARE. We did have a former GARE coalition here to get that feedback. We do plan to advertise more arenas for community engagement to try to get as much input as possible. There have already been some outreach, which Manager Michelle may be able to give some statistics. If not, we can update you when we bring, you know, we'll bring, we'll actually provide that information when we bring the final report to kind of highlight what we've done thus far, and then the attempt for moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments from colleagues on this item? Okay. We are moving now. Thank you so much for that and for your hard work and Keane's hard work. C9.
I don't really need a staff report. I was just wondering on C9, if possible, and as well as with any other development moving forward, we can incorporate someplace in there a clause or something where the developer maintains the property in terms of weeds and graffiti on the fences and whatnot as it pained to this project and any other project moving forward?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Verran. Again, Mark Munzer, Planning and Development Director. Yes, so beginning, we will start drafting conditions of approval that are attached to projects that specifically discuss site maintenance and more specific in terms of aesthetics and fencing in the interim period of time between a project approval and project construction. I can tell you specifically with this project, I've had very direct conversations with the new property ownership about what our expectations are while this project is reviewed again.
And then we can incorporate that in any other project as we move forward, correct? That'll be incorporated?
Yes. So we'll draft what are general or template-type conditions of approval, and then we'll, you know, attach those to the various projects that need Planning, Commissioner, or Council approval.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all from me, Mayor.
Sure. There were no comments on this one? Public comments? Okay. Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Verran and I did not speak at a time, and I was going to ask the exact same question. So I appreciate it. Thank you. I agree.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on now to C12.
If you want, just a really short, high-level background.
Sure. So, just making sure. Okay. So this item is about recommending approval of a task order with General Technologies and Solutions to develop Culver City's Transit Zero Emission Master Plan, which is critical to align our transit operations with California's mandate for 100% zero emission fleet by 2040, also supporting the federal goals for emission reduction. So we're recommending, the motion is indicating the staff report.
Thank you. And the, within here, I saw there's a planning for, I think, the second site for transportation in the future?
That will be something that will be part of the evaluation as well.
I'm just wondering what the process, if you know, for evaluation of what that site might be, where that site might be, how that process will work? Would that be through the consultant or internally?
We will most likely need to hire a consultant to do the work. And so it's very preliminary right now, but we will have a more defined process when we get to that point.
Okay, is that in the near future or far out when we get to that point?
We will likely do some preliminary work in the near future. That would give us a sense as to what the situation is like and what the likelihood is in terms of the sites that may be available, but majority of the work will be in the future.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to C13.
Same thing.
You want a high level?
High level.
Okay. We're seeking approval for a contract with HDR Inc. to support our mobility investment and grants strategy initiative. This strategy will help us assess the funding needs and recommend strategies to close any funding gaps so that we can maintain and enhance our transportation services as well as infrastructure, addressing both current and future mobility needs in Culver City.
Great, thank you. I'm personally really excited that we're going to start exploring an on-call service. I was, I'm just going to list these questions, and I think they're quick answers. Are we thinking it's going to be like the circulator or more like the circuit or both? And then, do you have a sense of the rollout timetable when we might see that come online? And then, is it going to be limited to certain parts of town or will it be citywide? And then finally, will we engage in sponsorship? I know that we can have advertising or we have advertising, at least on the circuit we had it. I'm not sure if we have it on the circulator, so all that.
So just to clarify, that we actually have a concurrent effort right now, and it's called Comprehensive Mobility Services Plan, that we already have a consultant we're working with that will give us and essentially look at all the mobility services that we have and look at the needs and recommend improvements to our existing mobility services as well as potentially new service in the future, new type of service. And this specific contract that we're talking about tonight is about a firm that will come and help us assess specifically financially how we can provide the mobility services in the future. And so I think, what was the second part of your question, if you don't mind?
Well, I just read, when I read the report, on-call transportation, infrastructure design, on-call public solicitation, well, maybe I was misinterpreting what the language was saying, but I thought of on-call as on-call public transportation.
Oh, so in this case, no. This is actually a consultant service that we solicited from our on-call bench and specifically to help us with the financial analysis and grant strategy.
Got it. Darn it. I know that's in our future plans, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Right. Any other comments from colleagues on this item? All right, thank you. C20.
Do you need a staff report or were there questions?
Sure, you can give us a quick staff report.
Sure. So the purpose of the California State Homeland Security Program, or SHC, grant funds are to equip emergency personnel, including firefighters, emergency medical services, and law enforcement with appropriate tools needed to plan for and react to incidents of terrorism and other catastrophic events. SHC grant funding is secured and managed by the County of Los Angeles as a guarantee through the California Office of Emergency Services and passed to participating cities in the County of Los Angeles. This year, CCFD requested to equip tactical medical, excuse me, tactical emergency medical services team members with eight sets of ballistic personal protective gear, including ballistic plates, helmets, four collapsible handle litters, and 150 casualty response kits. The motion before the council tonight is that the City Council adopt a resolution accepting the grant funds awarded to the City of Culver City for the purchase of these tactical emergency medical services equipment. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Did we have anything from the public on this one?
We do. We have one speaker signed up. Tanisha Brown.
Sounds good. Thank you unless there is comments. Dana? Thank you. Can we have a motion for consent calendar?
We have a motion by Vice Mayor O'Brien, a second by Councilmember Vera, to approve the entire consent calendar. Please vote.
Nothing, nothing on my screen, but aye.
Thank you. All members have voted, and the motion passes unanimously, and that's for all consent items.
Thank you. Moving on to PH1. This is some different language in the staff report. All right, it is the time and the place for the hearing of protests or objections to the continuation of this DCC, how many Cs, DCCBID. And City Clerk, your turn.
As City Clerk, I announce that the resolution of intention, which included the notice of this public hearing, was mailed to all affected businesses.
Can we have a staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name's Luis Gonzalez. I am the city's project manager in economic development. For your consideration, this evening is, one, the introduction of an ordinance confirming the Downtown Culver City Business Improvement District for the year 2025 for the annual work plan and levy of assessments; two, appointment of members to the Downtown Culver City Business Improvement District for the 2025 Advisory Board; and three, extension of the existing management agreement between the city and the Downtown Business Association until December of 2026. The Downtown Culver City Business Improvement District provides services for the businesses in downtown relative to the operations, maintenance, beautification, and marketing that is reflected in their work plan. There are no proposed changes to the DBA's boundary. The DBA is, though, proposing an increase of 3% to their fees for 2025. Should the ordinance be introduced tonight, the ordinance would return for adoption at the following City Council meeting on December 9th. As for tonight, we are requesting appointment of members to the Downtown Culver City Business Improvement District for the year 2025 and an extension of the existing management agreement between the city and the Downtown Business Association until December 2026. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Colleagues at this time? I do have a question about what the process was to determine the board membership.
That was something that the Downtown Business Association handles internally.
Okay, so we don't know how it was done? We just accept their recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that. All right, can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
We have a motion by Councilmember Erickson, a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien to open the public hearing. Please vote. All members have voted, and that motion passes unanimously. We have one speaker. We don't see Emily DeBini, so we have no speakers for this item.
Okay. Absolutely.
Development that you mentioned, because I was the one that wrote the comprehensive strategy for 2020 and to now, and no one reached out to me. So I'm trying to understand with this whole strategy and all these things, because like I'm seeing things, I'm getting emails saying like, oh, your proposal is a strategy, but no one ever reached out, no one ever said anything to me. I'm kind of confused on how you guys came about the process, because the EDA ignored, Commerce ignored, but I'm confused. I want to understand how that works. Sorry, I'm just asking regarding economic.
Can I guess your name?
Tanisha Brown.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Tanisha. My name is Eileen Warner. I'm the Director of Economic Development. I'm not familiar, we're not familiar with each other, so can you give me a little bit more information about the proposal that you wrote? And I can tell you a little bit more about this particular item tonight is just about the Business Improvement District for the Downtown Business Association.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just trying to understand, from 2020, I wrote a comprehensive strategy regarding how do we bring equity into underserved communities, women of color, a whole strategy. And from there, it was a partnership with the state of California, and from there, like with ARP, with all these different entities or different processes. And I haven't received any type of information, because I wrote it, you know, and I'm seeing it duplicated from different cities, from LA, I'm seeing Riverside, I have task orders, I'm not in compliance. And so I'm confused on how the process works, because if I wrote it but not involved, it's confusing to me.
I'm equally confused, but I am more than happy to have a conversation with you about it. So let's exchange information.
And that was the final speaker.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera and a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien to close the public hearing. Please vote. All members have voted, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera, any comments or concerns?
No comments or concerns, I'm ready to move forward with this.
Councilmember Erickson?
No.
Councilmember Puzan?
No, Mayor.
Vice Mayor O'Brien?
No comments.
Okay, can we have a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance?
Sorry, my screen went blank. Who made the motion?
I just asked for one, so I don't know.
Vice Mayor? Okay.
And I second.
Yeah, for some reason, I saw yours. Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor O'Brien, second by Councilmember Erickson, and that's to introduce the ordinance confirming the Downtown Culver City Business Improvement District 2025 Annual Work Plan and Levy of Assessments. I would also like to state that this is absent a majority protest and to appoint the 2025 Advisory Board as recommended by the Downtown Culver City Business Improvement District to extend the management agreement between the city and the DBA until December 31st, 2026, authorize the city attorney to review and prepare necessary documents, and authorize the city manager to execute such documents on behalf of the city. Please vote. All members have voted, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to PH2. So now, this is the time and place for the hearing of protests or objections to the continuation of the BID.
As City Clerk, I announce that the resolution of intention, which included notice of this public hearing, was mailed to all affected businesses.
All right, can we have a staff report, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Elizabeth Garcia, and I'm here to present with you a public hearing staff report for the Culver City Arts District Business Improvement District for calendar year 2025. For your consideration, there are three actions in front of you. Appointment of the members of the Culver City Arts District Business Improvement District's Advisory Board; two, approval of the extension of the existing management agreement with the Culver City Arts District through December 31st, 2025; and finally, an introduction of an ordinance confirming the Culver City Arts District Business Improvement District Work Program and the Levy of Assessments for the calendar year 2025. If council desires to approve the introduction of the assessment ordinance, the ordinance will come back to you for final approval in December. Please note that there were two protests received for this item, which does not constitute a majority protest. This concludes the staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Okay, can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera and a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien, and that is to open the public hearing. All members have voted, that motion passes unanimously. And we have no speakers for this item.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, second by Vice Mayor O'Brien, to close the public hearing. All members have voted, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera, any comments, questions?
No, thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson?
No.
Councilmember Puzan?
Yeah, I have one quick question. It actually was regarding the last one, but it's applicable to this public hearing. Is there a mechanism for a business to troubleshoot if they have issues with the assessment? So let's say they're paying assessments, and that contributes to the bid's activities, those activities negatively impact their business, and they maybe want an exemption or something like that. Is there a mechanism? Is this their only mechanism to protest that? Or is there any other way that they could address that grievance?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So in general, the schedule of assessments is done by the actual Business Improvement District Advisory Board, and that is placed in the work plan, which is then noted to those constituents. This is their opportunity to protest, but the way that they would probably find those exemptions would be either to speak with the DBA or to the CCAD before the work plan is done. In this particular case, we would have to study.
we would have to study whether an exemption could be done at this point, but it would really be speaking with the business district. And I think it's important to note that the business districts in general are trying to promote and advocate and maintain those districts on behalf of all the businesses, so.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Can we have a motion to adopt a proposed resolution?
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien to introduce on first reading the proposed ordinance confirming the Culver City Arts District Business Improvement District's Advisory Board's annual report, and the levy of the Culver City Arts District Business Improvement District assessment for calendar year 2025, and appoint the 2025 Advisory Board as recommended by the CC Arts District Business Improvement District, and to approve an extension of the existing management agreement between the city and the Culver City Arts District through December 31, 2025, and authorize the city attorney to review and prepare the necessary documents, and authorize the city manager to execute such documents on behalf of the city. We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, and a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien, as previously stated, and now please vote. All members have voted, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we're going to move on to PH3, but I am recusing myself from this, because I live within 500 feet of this project.
Ma'am, I'm also recusing myself. I live within 500 feet of the project, and it's reasonably foreseeable that the project will impact my use and enjoyment of my residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All yours.
Okay, first time for me. We have a staff report.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council, and community members. I'm the current Planning Manager, Emily Stadniki, and I'm happy to be with you tonight. I'll give you a brief overview of the project, and then hand it over to the city's case planner, Jose Mendeville. The applicant's presentation will follow ours. City staff, the city's SEQA consultants, and the applicant team are here to answer any questions. Next slide, please. 5700 Hanham is a six-story mixed-use project with 309 residential units, including 27 restricted for very low income. The 2.2-acre project site is in Fox Hills, at the southwest corner of Hanham and Buckingham Parkway. It includes a commercial space, open space for the general public on the ground floor fronting Hanham Avenue, as well as decks, balconies, and patios for the project residents. Next slide. The process began in late 2022, and one of the first steps was a community meeting. The applicant will discuss this further in their presentation, but here's a list of the project and environmental impact report-related community meetings. This community input was used to refine the project's design and the required submittals. Next. The project application involves multiple entitlements: certification of the project's environmental impact report per the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA; amendments to the land use and zoning designations in both the general plan map and the zoning map to allow the project as proposed; a comprehensive plan and density increase to allow the proposed specific development standards, allowed uses, and number of units; and the extension of construction hours to allow work outside of code limits, shortening the overall construction period by two months. In July, the Planning Commission recommended that city council approve the project as conditioned here. Minutes from that meeting are included in your packet as attachment number 10. Next slide. I'm going to hand it over to Jose.
Thank you. Jose Mendeville, Associate Planner, current Planning Division. At the Planning Commission hearing in July, residents who generally live near the project site raised the following issues regarding extended construction hours, airflow and breeze restriction, and traffic. Regarding extended construction hours, page five of the staff report provides a detailed table summarizing start and stop times, duration, and specific types of extended construction activity. For the most part, the extended hours occur at the front end of the project construction phase, and would shorten the overall duration of construction. The extra time is in the mornings. None of the extended hours activity goes beyond the code-required daily end time. Regarding airflow and breeze, the final EIR notes that per SEQA statutes and guidelines, ocean breezes are not considered an environmental factor, requiring review. Also, during summer, wind in the project vicinity generally flows from the southwest to the northeast. So residential dwellings east of the site should not have wind or breeze impacts as the project lies directly west of them. Regarding traffic, the city's public work staff reviewed the traffic study and determined it adequately assessed the project's traffic generation, along with overall traffic in the vicinity and pipeline projects. Also, potential future projects are captured with a standard industry practice of assuming an overall growth of at least, an overall traffic growth of at least 2% per year. Next slide. Regarding the map amendments, the application was deemed complete under the previous general plan and zoning code. So for the municipal code, it is processed in compliance with those requirements. Therefore, the project site retains the regional center land use designation and the regional business park CRB zoning, even though the surrounding area now has a new mixed-use high general plan designation and is zoned to mixed-use high. The general plan and zoning map amendments are required for this project, because the former land use and zoning designations do not allow housing. Because of the size of the site, the applicant has utilized the comprehensive plan process to create a plan development or PD zone. This entitlement allows for special zoning district with unique standards that better fit the site. There are currently 17 PDs in the city, and this project, if approved, will be zoned PD-18. Next slide, please. Regarding the comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan provides standard height, setbacks, and allowed land uses for the PD zone. Each of the existing 17 PD zone developments has a unique comprehensive plan. The allowed uses here include dwelling units, offices, restaurants, retail, and personal services like hair and nail salons. The comprehensive plan is included in attachment number six of your packet. Next slide, please. The project's base density is 100 dwelling units per acre, which corresponds to the city's new mixed-use high land use designation. At this density, there are 223 base units, and under state density law, the city must grant a 38.75% density increase, because the development is providing 12% of the base as very low-income units. The applicant is proposing 86 bonus units for a total of 309. Because of these percentages, the city must grant two concessions or incentives if requested. The applicant is only requesting one, a 78-foot-tall structure that would otherwise be limited to 56 feet. As a reminder, state density bonus law requires the city bear the burden of proof and provide written findings based upon substantial evidence that a concession is not needed. Height is listed in state density law as a development standard that can be waived, and staff recommends the concession be granted. Next slide, please. Pursuant to SEQA, an initial study was prepared for the project. It determined that several environmental factors were impacted, and further study was needed. Draft and final EIRs were completed for this project. You can, for this project, you can refer to attachment number seven of this agenda item for these two environmental reports that together formed the SEQA documentation for this project. Within the final EIR, a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program is included that lists all the environmental impacts that require further study and the mitigations that reduce their impacts. The ordinance approving the comprehensive plan contains conditions of approval, including one that requires the applicant complete all mitigations in the monitoring report. As mentioned, the project includes a request for extended construction hours, beginning at 7:00 AM instead of the code standard 8:00 AM on weekdays, 9:00 AM on Saturdays, and 10:00 AM on Sundays. This would shorten the overall construction period by two months. My cardon of ESA, the city's SEQA consultant, is here to answer SEQA-related questions. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff recommends the city council approve the project with all requests and environmental determinations as conditioned. This would include certification of the EIR and the mitigation monitoring program, approval of the comprehensive plan, density bonus, general plan map amendment, and zoning code map amendment, thereby creating the PD-18 zone through ordinance, and the granting of an extended construction hours resolution approval. Next slide, please. Thank you. That concludes our presentation. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant team is also ready for a presentation.
Thank you. A quick question on procedure here. I think I jumped ahead.
Yeah.
So, seek a motion to receive and file the affidavit of publication and posting of the public hearing notice.
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Councilmember Erickson, to receive and file as stated. For those voting, please vote. That motion passes. Three ayes, no noes.
All right. Apologies, first time. And now, questions from my colleagues. Councilmember Erickson, any questions?
The public meetings that were held, so if I understand right, the first public meeting had inputs that then got worked into the redesign, and the second public meeting, were those the three issues that were remaining: traffic, and the wind issue, and noise issue. Was that, is that correct?
Yes, the applicant could speak to this with more detail, but those items have been part of the discussion since the beginning. They were most recently discussed at the Planning Commission hearing in July.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Vera? Just a quick question. In terms of some of the asks that they're asking, how much of this is mandated by the state, that we really have no say in what can be done?
Did the Assistant City Attorney want to speak about that, or the city attorney?
Thank you. I'll defer this to the Assistant City Attorney, who is online, Christina Burrows.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. This is Christina Burrows, Assistant City Attorney. As Emily and Jose mentioned earlier, in terms of the state density bonus ask, the state density bonus law imposes a really strict standard for denial. Staff's recommendation is that the density request and the height request under the state density bonus law be approved by the council. In terms of the, you know, the general standard of denial for a project like this, this project was submitted under the prior zoning code and general plan. Because it does not comply with the zoning code or general plan that was in effect at the time of the application's submittal, a plain reading of state law indicates that the city can deny the project. In addition, because this project seeks a zoning code amendment, it doesn't fall within the protections of the Housing Accountability Act. And the standards for considering a comprehensive plan are listed in the staff report and also in the ordinance that's attached to the staff report. The applicant team disagrees with this. The applicant team alleges that this project is consistent with the housing element, anticipated density, and that pursuant to the Housing Accountability Act, the city can't deny the project unless it finds that there is a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety, and there's no way to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the adverse impact. Staff has sought guidance on this topic from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, but HCD was unable to respond by tonight's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to reserve my questions until after we hear from the public. So if I can get a motion to open the public hearing, providing the applicant the first opportunity to speak, followed by the general public.
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Councilmember Erickson, to open the public hearing. Please vote. All members have voted who were present. The motion passes. Three ayes.
Okay. Please.
Give me one moment. No, we don't have a call. You just say next.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Stephen Lindgren. I'm Senior Vice President with Lincoln Property Company. It's nice to be back in front of the council. We appreciate you guys working with us throughout this long process. We're excited to be here tonight and present our project to you guys in front of everybody here tonight. Next slide. Lincoln has had a considerable amount of experience in Culver City. Our projects here in the city include 8777 Washington, which is Apple's content creation headquarters, the Scenic Arts Building at Sony Studios, 3855 Watsika, and the Entrada Project most recently. Lincoln is a big believer in Culver City and believes in the vibrant community that we've been able to help construct here in the heart of Southern California. With all of our projects, we believe in robust community outreach and stakeholder engagement to ensure that we meet the standards and needs of the community. We have met with the Planning Commission numerous times over the past few years, and we have heard your concerns. We understand there's a growing need for housing, and we are committing to helping the city meet those housing goals. That's what we've done here in Culver City, and we believe we've accomplished with the 5700 Hanham project that is before you tonight. Next slide. Next slide, please. Next slide. We're very proud of the very talented team we've assembled here for the 5700 Hanham project. Next slide. The team has extensive experience in Culver City. Jonathan Watts with KFA Architecture is our lead architect. KFA's headquarters is right here in Culver City. Drew Hild is a project partner with us with years of experience in Culver City. Agency Artifact is our landscape architect, and we always value the local knowledge and great community outreach by Jeff Mailman, a longtime partners of ours. We're also joined tonight by our land use counsel, Spencer Calick from Allen-Mattens. Next slide. We are briefly going to share the features of the proposed 5700 Hanham project, share details of the community engagement process, and how we translated feedback into the project design. Next slide. And just a quick overview on some of KFA's projects within Culver City: the Shea, Upper Ivy, and their offices. The proposed project. So the property is 2.23-acre site with a two-story office building and service parking at the intersection of Hanham and Buckingham Parkway. The site slopes downward from north to south by approximately 25 feet along Buckingham. There's also a landscape slope on the eastern edge of the property along Buckingham that is up to 50 feet wide and 75 feet tall. Next slide. Here is an aerial of the site. The site is surrounded largely by commercial buildings to the north and west, and residential uses to the east and south. There are multiple large five or more-story office buildings along Hanham north of the property, including the 11-story TikTok headquarters at the corner of Hanham and Bristol Parkway. Across Buckingham Parkway from the property are other residential buildings of four or more stories. Next slide. Here again is the overall design looking west at the property from the northeast corner of Hanham and Buckingham. You can see how we designed the project to accommodate the existing slope of the site, and to design the project with balconies, articulation, and attractive, modern design features. Next slide. In all, the proposed plan is a total of 309 new residential apartment units, of which 27 units are dedicated exclusively for- 27 units are dedicated exclusively for very low-income households. There will also be 5,600 square feet for community-serving onsite retail uses. The project will provide 428 parking spaces across two semi-subterranean levels and one ground floor level. We will also provide 92 bike parking spots, and we also are including 42 electrical vehicle charging stations. Next slide. Here's a look at the corner of Hanham and Buckingham. You can see the retail at the street level and the activation of the street along Buckingham and Hanham, something that does not exist here today. Next slide. Here is the vantage point on Hanham looking eastward. You see the beautiful landscaping plan, open space areas as a sidewalk experience, and then the landscape and open space components have been designed thoughtfully to complement Fox Hills Parkette across the street. Next slide. We are also proud of how we have designed the project to connect the site to the residential neighborhood to the east. Here's a view along Buckingham looking north. We incorporated new urbanism principles to help create connectivity as well between the ground floor units and the sidewalk. Next slide. The project has also been designed thoughtfully with great regard to access and circulation. There are two vehicular entrances to the property, one along Buckingham and one along Hanham. Slide. Now, I'd like to share some of the highlights of our team's ongoing engagement with the community. Next slide. We kicked off the effort with an online community meeting in December of 2022. It was attended by nearly 100 neighbors. We also held an in-person community meeting in July of last year. About 100 neighbors attended that meeting as well. The scoping meeting was held online in September, and the DEIR meeting was on April 30th. We held dozens of other meetings either with individual neighbors or small groups on a regular basis as well. Next slide. We also launched a website at the beginning of the process to share information with the community about the project, the city's review and approval process, as well as background on the team. Next slide. Here we've talked about some of the extended hours of construction. I think they outlined it in the staff plan. Next slide. That's our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any speakers from the public?
We do. We have 19.
Okay.
And so, they'll be given two minutes apiece. I'll read off the names. Raj Dut, Jeff Baderster, Deborah Wallace, Candance Simmons, Marcy Bond, Judy Sherman, Jeff Haas, and Ralph Velador. Those are not all the names, but the start of the names. So, is Raj Dut here? I'm going to look and see if he's online. Raj Dut is not present here. He's not on WebEx. We'll go to the next speaker. Jeff Baderster. Hope I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Close enough.
[laughing].
Hi, everybody. I'm Jeff Batticher. I'm with Morgan Stanley, and we actually own the 5800 Bristol Parkway property, which is a block and a half away. And we are very supportive of this project. I think Lincoln and KFA have designed a project that will suit the neighborhood very well. There's certainly a lack of retail amenities within that neighborhood up there, and we have tenants within our office building that are looking for additional retail amenities. And I think what they've planned for this project in relation to that would be very nice for the neighborhood, and hopefully, it's something that gets approved so that we can see that enhancement within our neighborhood, and we can have some walkability. The other thing that I would add is that we've got a number of people that work within our office building. A lot of them, you know, drive into the property on a daily basis, and I think it would be nice if you had, if they had the option to be able to walk from their home, you know, to the office. So, having a neighborhood where you would have, you know, good residential base coupled with a commercial office space, I think would be very nice. So, I think that would be a very good enhancement to the neighborhood as well. One of the things which Lincoln has planned within their project are, you know, the adaption of some bike lanes. So, the idea that people could potentially live in these units, you know, and ride their bikes to the office, I think would also be very nice. And then, lastly, what they also have planned in here are nice, affordable units, and I think that within the city, right now, we've got a real lack of affordable units. So, the fact that they plan these in could be a critical component. So, we very much support this project.
Our next speaker is Deborah Wallace, followed by Candance Simmons. Not seeing them in chamber or online. Our next speaker is Candance Simmons, followed by Marcy Bond. Ms. Simmons, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Candance Simmons, a 20-year resident in Fox Hills, Culver City. I'm excited to support the development of the 57 Hanham project. This project brings so much promise to our community, a walk for retail therapy, potentially create new jobs and opportunities to experience the community, next to a beautifully designed rentals that have a brownstone look and feel, and importantly, a small window of commitment for affordable housing. Having a mix of nice units, small retail, and a section of low-income affordable units creates inclusivity, bringing more people to a chance to experience our vibrant city. Learning nothing has been built in the commercial spaces of Fox Hills over the past 20 years, this development is more than just building. It's a step towards connected, walkable, and accessible Culver City for all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcy Bond, followed by Judy Sherman.
I just, I just had a few questions about it because I know that they said they're going to be offering, I think it was 92 bike places. I'm not, is that going to be outside where people would, or is that going to be inside? My only concern is that those seem to get stolen a lot, the bikes do. We've seen this. And the other question I had was, so there's 309 parking spaces and 309 units. Is that what it says?
No.
I know, but it's, I thought it said 309 residential parking.
428.
It was 428, right. But the 309 residential? So, there's exactly one parking per one residential?
No.
No?
It's three, three on.
309.
309, and there's 428 spaces.
I understand that. That I do understand, but I thought it was 309 parking spaces that were residential. So, it's a total of 428 for all of them. And that, but that also includes parking for the retail spaces as well? Okay. That was just my question to make sure that there was enough parking for everybody, that it wasn't assumed that everybody, that there can only be one car per household.
Our next speaker is Judy Sherman, followed by Jeff Haas.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Fox Hills and part of the Fox Hills Neighbored Association Board. The, how long do I have? Two minutes, good. The EIR for this project is really meaningless because it does not take into account, nor do they have to take into account or do a cumulative effect of the other surrounding proposals. The city should be doing this work, and if they do not, it might be considered negligent and open for liability, since we are at a higher risk for negative impact on our health than other parts of the city. Presently, with five developer proposals telling 3,000 units on the south side of Slauson, is evidence enough of how meaningless this EIR is? This particular development in particular is adjacent to another one that's going to be starting on Uplander that's going to come right through to Buckham, so it'll be like a wall of housing. We are not NIMBYs in Fox Hills, like many other areas in Culver City are, but this density is just too much. Second point I want to make, at the second community meeting at 5700 Hanham, when a resident asked a high-ranking member of its team about the environmental impact report, this team member scoffed and said that this information is not paid attention to and that the plan is to put as much housing as possible in Fox Hills. And that's obviously true. And also, again, another proof where this public hearing is pure theater. Point three, the Planning Commission's decision to rubber stamp this project showed such a lack of insight and good judgment about Fox Hills area. I even think that one or two of them don't even know where Fox Hills is. In summary, you need to put this project on hold. You need a cumulative effect of what's going on with your 3,000-plus and probably more to come. It's a disgrace. And it's a disgrace because you guys were inactive. And where's the rest of the city council? Are they listening?
They had to, they can't listen from the back, but they can't participate because of their recusal.
Our next speaker is Jeff Haas, followed by Ralph Velador.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Velador.
One moment. One moment. There's a guy on the phone named Jeff. Let's call him after. Mr. Velador, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to talk a little bit about my story. As I served our country in the United States Army, received accommodations for the achievements I did protecting our country. And as we do, we get celebrated year after year on Veterans Day. Those celebrations are short-lived in some of the eyes of some of my fellow veterans in our community. If you really want to celebrate veterans, give the opportunity to Lincoln Properties to build projects like this, to allow them, those veterans, to have those jobs they need in order to provide for their families. My story is not much different than a lot of the folks that are here today. We're here staying here late at night because these jobs are important to us. Lincoln Properties hires contractors who pay mortgage-paying wages that are benefited jobs, that give us opportunity, provide for our families, to take our kids to the doctors, to help provide, to send our kids to college. I have five girls that I was lucky enough to send to college and are doing very well because of the union job that I have today, because of developers that hire good contractors like Lincoln Properties that pay those good wages. If you want to eradicate homelessness, you want to help the veteran community and make these celebrations go lifelong, allow this project to go through. Not only will we build it, we'll be able to purchase properties at the places we build so we can live there as well. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jeff Haas.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, so I've been in Culver City with my business since 1981. I've been in Fox Hills for 26 years. I'm really looking forward to having Fox Hills revitalized. Like other people have said in the past, that I can go grab a cup of coffee at a retail spot. I can potentially have employees work near my office versus driving a long way to get there. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing this, you know, revitalization of Fox Hills and everything that's going to come with it. I just hope that you see this as a really nice project that they've got planned based by the, all their pictures that we've seen. It should be really great for the area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Byrne.
Good evening, Council. My name is Richard Burns. I'm a representative of the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. We support this project. Lincoln Properties, excuse me, Lincoln Properties has committed to work with contractors that will pay local hire and utilize apprentices from state-certified apprenticeship training schools. I would like to express my support for the project as I believe that it will benefit the environment and the local economy that participates protocols that will protect workers' health and safety and incorporate adequate environmental immigration. Again, Lincoln Properties, they'll get this job done right, on time, and they'll support the local economy. Thank you for your support.
Our next speaker is Edward Walkowitz, followed by Jonathan Daley.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I have to confess that even after all these years, whenever I'm in this room, I find it somewhat strange to be speaking on this side of the days, but I'm going to give it a shot anyway. I'm here this evening as the interim CEO of the Culver City Chamber of Commerce, and I wanted to inform the council that recently, the chamber had the opportunity, the chamber board had the opportunity to consider this project, discuss it, and unanimously decided to endorse it and to recommend that the council approve it. I believe that there are two major components of this project that benefit the city as a whole. First of all, it helps the city satisfy some of its obligations towards the housing element, which is very important. And from the chamber's perspective, it provides an opportunity for new businesses to come into Culver City. So, from that, from those perspectives, this is, in the chamber's view, a win-win situation, and we would encourage the council to approve the project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Daley, followed by Jason Baez.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Daley. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. I'm a proud member of Lyuna Laborers Union. We're here in full support of this project and this developer. It was, it was mentioned earlier, my time in the military really opened my eyes up to our families do serve just as much, if not a little more than we did. I met my wife while I was in the military, and I had her full support, even though she wasn't too fond of the job that I had at the time. And she stuck with me through all of it. Now, we have a one-year-old son, and I'm on this side of the world, which is, which is incredible. I had more, I think, anxiety coming out of the military than I did going in because I didn't know what to expect or what I was going to do. And now, I had a wife, and I knew I wanted to support her and her dreams, able to make that a reality for them. So, while we're here speaking on behalf of this project, she's at home with him and able to care for him, and it's the most beautiful thing to see for me. I know countless other veterans as well within Lyuna that have the same dreams and goals that I do, and that's to be able to just provide food for my family, healthcare, a roof over their head, and work local, which is, which is huge for us because we've already missed a lot of our lives at young ages as well. So, I'm able to be home and be with my family when these, when these opportunities come to us. So, with that, we, we ask you, please, support this project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Baez, followed by Ernesto Penta.
Honorable Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jason Baez, and I'm a proud member of Laborers Local 300, and I fully support this project. I grew up here in Culver City, as well as my parents, my grandparents, and my children. Five generations of my family have been here. If it's one thing we know, it's this city that we love so very much. As far back as I can remember, up into the very present day, this leadership of this city has allocated all tax funds with the utmost integrity and wisdom, as I enjoyed the teen center throughout my life, along with my children, my mother enjoying the current senior programs. the current senior programs, all of us enjoy the maintenance and the beauty and the cleanliness of all the streets here. We have the most top-quality response teams in all fronts here, best schools that everybody tries to put their children in. I love this city, just like Heidi said, and I am very proud to be a Culver Cityan. But there's one thing I believe that all of us in this room can agree upon, and that's that there's so much more for us to do and that we can do. This project will give us that opportunity. That corner has been a dreary eyesore for as long as I can remember. That building is beautiful and would be very pleasant on the eyes. If it's built, I'm going to buy a coffee and take my wife for a walk right there. So much can be benefited from that building, and it will be built with the very best workforce in this world, the American Union tradesmen, which this honorable applicant has sacrificed top dollar to pay for. Please consider all the blessings that have been handed to us on a silver platter this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ernesto Pintua, followed by Leah Ross.
Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Ernesto Pintua, here on behalf of Sergio Roscon, business manager of Labor's Local 300. One of the things a lot of people don't understand is what our unions mean for people, right? A lot of people drive by construction projects that are union but don't understand the people underneath the hard hats that are wearing them. As some of my colleagues said, right, a lot of them are veterans who are coming out of service, whose skill sets don't necessarily translate to the civilian life. We afford them an opportunity for a career. Formerly incarcerated individuals, we give them the opportunity to change their lives on a positive path, give them the ability to build a family, buy a home, have benefits for themselves and their family members. Women, we've been growing and increasing over time, bringing women into the trades, right, giving them alternative careers. I came out of the city of San Fernando, working-class family. My father was in the Army. He was a General Motors employee for 30 years. It was projects like this, not too far from here, Playa Vista, where we had mixed-rate units. My brother and I were able to buy one of those units. There's no way we would have ever been able to afford living on the West Side if it wasn't for projects like this and developers like Lincoln Properties that are committed to people like us and our family members and giving them that first step in the right direction to building their life. We ask you to please support this project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leah Ross, followed by Barbara Simon.
Hello. I'm a Fox Hills resident for about 30 years, and I'm supporting a lot of what Judy already has said eloquently. And there will be development here, of course. I'm concerned about the density, that the density was raised to 100 units per acre. And I'm thinking about, I was thinking back to my chemistry class a long, long time ago in high school, when we did experiments with saturation. As you know, you add particulates to a liquid, and it can only hold so much and still be blended. And we did one where we put in some solution, I don't remember now what the particulate was, but we blended it and dissolved and dissolved as much as we could, and then we just put a little bit more in, and the whole thing came out of solution. It wouldn't hold anything. And I guess I'm just thinking, what's our saturation point in Fox Hills? And are you thinking about that? And the plan for all the development that is planned so far? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Simon, followed by David Cairo.
I ceded my time to another speaker, so thank you.
Our next speaker is David Cairo, followed by Nick Brown. David, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
As a 19-year resident of Fox Hills, my neighbors and I are very concerned about upcoming developments in Fox Hills to add the high-density housing. These projects will lead to a tremendous increase in traffic and noise pollution, and it will worsen the already congested parking situation, make it much more difficult for residents and visitors to find parking. Our neighborhood's way of life will be severely impacted, and we're opposed to the development in this area. I'm also concerned about this very carefully created situation dissuade the opinion of the council, having veterans with vests, talking about the jobs on Veterans Day. Our concern has nothing to do with the developer. We definitely support jobs for veterans. That's not the issue. This building can be built, but not in Fox Hills. There are lots of other areas that could distribute the housing. Having all five developers in Fox Hills, putting in 3,000 units, it's not, it's our concern. It's not equitable. We're the most dense neighborhood in Fox Hills as it is, and we want to put this on hold until the EIR is studied. As Judy mentioned, there's five different developers, and all of these are, all the impacts need to be looked at together. So please, council, take a look at that, and thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Nick Brown. Nick, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
And good evening. My name is Nick Brown, and I represent the property owner just west of this project, located at 5757 Uplander Way, and I'm here to speak in support of this project. As we know, Culver City needs additional housing, and we are excited to see this project moving forward. Lincoln has assembled an excellent team who have thoughtfully designed a first-class project. And not only will the project benefit Fox Hills by providing much-needed housing, but it will also help to activate the area with sorely needed neighborhood-serving retail uses. We are generally in support of projects like this, this one that bring the level of housing that the city has approved with its recent general plan and zoning updates.
Our next speaker is David Saita.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the city council. My name is David Saita. I'm Executive Vice President with IDS Real Estate Group. I've been before at this chamber, this council, and previous councils, I think six times, twice for C3, which is down the street from this project at 5800 Bristol Parkway, twice for the Culver Steps in partnership with the Hackman Capital Team, and then also Hayden Place twice. So hopefully, Lincoln won't have to come through twice, and they can do this in one meeting this evening. This is also the very first time I've ever spoken on behalf of a project that's not mine. I am very excited about this project. As the developer of C3, which is right across the street, we think that the mix of residential units and retail will be a tremendous addition to the neighborhood. And some of my tenants agree, in fact, all the tenants I spoke with. And I would like to read a statement from TikTok, who is our largest tenant in the building, which is a manager who, quote, said, "TikTok is very excited about this high-quality residential and retail project coming across the street from our headquarters at C3 at Culver Point. Having 309 apartments within walking distance of our office will help us recruit and retain talent, but will also reduce traffic in the area. And having a cafe and other convenience-oriented retailers so close will be very helpful as well. We hope you'll consider approving the project tonight." Thank you.
Good evening again. I'm a 36-year resident of Fox Hills, Culver City's stepchild, apparently. What seems to be happening is we've got this 100-units-per-acre designation and no plan, really, no master plan for all of those acres. So what are we going to end up with finally? As we understand it, the problem's going to be created, and then the problem's supposedly going to be solved after the project is completed. Doesn't make sense. The 5700 Hanum project has been evaluated in isolation, as have other projects, developments in the same region. Currently, we would pack 2,900 housing units in what is already the most densely populated area in Culver City. Planners have stated that in previous meetings that the problem would be taken care of later. So, and none of these living units, housing units, are going to be for sale. One of the gentleman mentioned, I was given the impression that, I think it was Mr. Velador? Yeah. That they're being paid mortgage rate wage, and yet none of these are going to be for sale. Like, none of the 3,300 units, as far as I know, are designed to be for sale, and homeownership has been an American dream since America's been. How does the council square with that? Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Thank you to the commenters. So now we allow the applicant to respond to some of the questions. Some of the, I don't know if you were taking notes, but I saw questions about onsite bike parking, where that's located exactly. Maybe this is a question for the city itself, cumulative effect. I thought that there was some discussion about that in your presentation. Concerns about congestion, you know, how, spread the development around the city. I mean, you own the property, that's where you're going to develop, but you can answer that as well. Any other questions you caught from the commenters, if you want to respond to that?
Good evening, council members. My name is Spencer Calak with the project team. Just want to briefly address a couple of the comments that were raised, a couple points of clarification. One was about bike parking. There will be 92 bicycle parking spaces, 11, what we call, short-term, in and out, and 81 long-term spaces. Some of those will be out on the street so people can, you know, park their bike, walk and grab a coffee and leave. And for residents, some of those will be inside the garage in a locked area so that they're safe for residents and so they're not out on their balconies, but they're safely designated in a specific place in the parking garage. One of the questions was about, or a couple of comments were about accumulative analysis. As part of this project, we'll back up a couple steps. With the housing element that was adopted by the city, the city looked at the entirety of the city and looked at where would housing go. And this council and previous councils adopted the housing element after doing a rigorous review of where housing may go. Now, we're here this evening to talk about a project in Fox Hills, and there are others that are being proposed in the Fox Hills area, but there are also many, many other projects that have been proposed throughout the city. And the city did careful study, both in terms of its housing element, but also its general plan that was just passed, the general plan, EIR, that was just adopted, looked at not just one project as a standalone, but also all the potential projects that could come forward that would be a part of achieving the city's housing goals. For this project, EIR in particular, I know the city's SEQA engineer is here this evening and can answer any questions, but what I'll say is that when this project began its SEQA analysis, and the city issued what's called a notice of preparation to kick off the SEQA process, this was the only, this project, 5700 Hanum, was the only project in Fox Hills at the time that had been just proposed. However, the EIR did look at several other projects within the city and within the city of Los Angeles. In particular, there were 12 projects that were studied, including another project named Fox Hills at 6221 Bristol, a prior iteration of that project, that were analyzed. And that SEQA analysis could only be done on projects that were known at the time when the application, rather than notice of preparation, was circulated. So yes, there have been other projects that have come along later on. Those were not specifically listed in the SEQA analysis. But what I can also tell you, and you know, Traffic Engineer can speak to this as well, is that additional growth is factored into the models in this for future projects that may come along or that weren't known at the time but came along after the notice of preparation was circulated. Let's see, did I miss any other questions?
Could you possibly kind of respond to the parking question just from the standpoint of what the allocation is and why?
Absolutely. So there are 428 parking stalls that are proposed for this project. 405 would be dedicated for residential, to believe is about 1.3, 1.4 parking spaces per unit, and then 23 commercial spaces. This is always a balance, right? The city has no parking as a rule. At the same time, we've had, as you heard, many, many community meetings, community discussions, and I've heard very clearly from a lot of our friends and neighbors in Fox Hills that they want a lot of parking. And so finding that balance is really important. And so one of the things that we have done and that the Lincoln team has done is you usually plan for enough parking to make sure that every single person who lives there has a place to park, plus one, right? Because you never want someone to not be able to find a parking space, and, but you don't want to, you know, overpark the place because then there's a lot of extra parking that is not necessary. So we've looked at that very closely and feel confident the project before you has adequate parking to meet the needs for the community.
So a follow-up to that. Will the parking be decoupled from the apartments?
Yes. As of this year, or sorry, as of the beginning of next year, parking is required by state law to be decoupled.
Yeah. And for people, that means that you don't get a parking space automatically with your apartment. That's an additional choice you have to make. If you don't have a car, you don't have to pay for parking, and if you happen to have two cars, there might be two spaces available for you. So that's really a more efficient use of parking when it's decoupled. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. There is another question maybe you can answer. I've been told, I might have asked you when you were presenting to council individually, why not condos? Gentlemen, was something to do with insurance makes it really challenging?
Yes, so this project is proposed as an apartment project. It's not proposed as a condo project. Other developers may choose to do condos in the future, but that's not what Lincoln is doing with this project. And I think, look, it's important to have a mix of units throughout the community, and so we're excited to bring apartment units to Fox Hills. There are a lot of condos and townhomes that are there already today, and so I think it'll be good to have a nice mix of units throughout the community.
Council members, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. I think that's all I have. To follow up on the question about kind of cumulative study and how the city's EIR went for the general plan and everything.
Yeah, I think it would be great if we could hear from Mike Harden, the city's SEQA consultant.
Good evening. My name is Mike Harden. I'm with ESA. We are the consultant that worked with city staff in preparing the EIR for the project. And what I can say about cumulative impacts, and I think as the And what I can say about cumulative impacts, and I think as the project representative mentioned, the EIR included a list of related projects, there are 12 related projects that were identified at the time of the notice of preparation. Those are the projects that were known at the time. They were developed in consultation with Culver City, Los Angeles, as well as the county. So, as was also mentioned, the SEQA anticipates and even expects that additional projects may come down the line as the environmental impact report is being prepared. So, the traffic analysis includes a 1% ambient growth factor, which is meant to account for future projects that are not included on the list of related projects. So, for impacts that will rely upon the traffic information, such as air quality impacts, noise impacts, we use the traffic data to run our models. So therefore, quantitative issues such as air quality, noise, traffic, they do account for projects that are not listed in our list of related projects. Each issue in the environmental impact report included a project-specific analysis, as well as a separate standalone cumulative impact analysis. So it's all included in the draft EIR. The findings of the EIR indicated that the project-specific impacts, as well as the cumulative impacts with implementation of the prescribed mitigation measures, would all result in less than significant impacts.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. I just had one more question for Lincoln. I mean, looking at the images and everything, I mean, I'm seeing the existing condition of the property is basically a building and a bunch of surface asphalt parking. And the photos look pretty, or the renderings look pretty great. And there's also impact fees that are listed here as well. And I know that we brought it up in our prior council meeting, per request from the community to look at dedicating these funds to the areas where they built. But I see we've got 2.17 million in Inlew Parkland, approximately 1 million in that mobility. Can you, I know that there's green space on the property itself, and I'm seeing major setbacks on a couple of the, or on, you know, one side at least. Can you talk about those benefits? And also, how many, between one and how many retail spaces can we have, or is it just one?
Sure. So, a couple of things. On the fees piece, you're correct, councilman, there's about $3.2 million in estimated development fees. Those are fees that are required to be paid, and we gladly pay them, but we don't get to dictate where those funds go. But as an example, you know, the million dollars in mobility fees, I know there's a lot of really great mobility projects that are being planned in the Fox Hills area. We would love to see, and we would certainly support if the council directed those fees to go to the Fox Hills community, because it makes sense for them to go there. And we've already implemented and planned for, as part of this project, implement a lot of the safer Fox Hills plans, such as the bike lane going down our frontage, and so we're very supportive of that. In terms of the community, you know, community or public open space, there is about 5,600 square feet of retail space. At the moment, we don't have a tenant, you know, we're still a number of years away. That could be one tenant, it could be several tenants, it was just a little early to say that. But there's also, in addition, about 7,000, about 7,500 square feet of public open space on that frontage that leads to a little over 13,000 square feet of kind of public open space and public neighborhood-serving uses that don't exist today, right? It's, we've kind of all walked it, it's pretty barren out there. And we're really excited about the connectivity between the park let across the street, the new retail space, the new open space where people can go and have a cup of coffee and, you know, maybe walk there after they're walking their dog at the park across the street, and we're very, very excited about that.
Great. And is that open space reflected in the 2.1 million dollars, or the 2.1 million dollars is another, that's, that's separate going to, that's one of the impact?
That's separate.
That's separate, okay. So in addition to that, there's another 2.1 million dollars that are going to our parks. Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the next step is seek a motion to close the public hearing after all testimony has been presented.
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Councilmember Erickson, to close the public hearing. Please vote. All members have voted. And that motion passes, three ayes.
And then, any further comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Erickson?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, these decisions are always serious, and, yeah, so everyone knows, this is the package we got specifically for this project. So I don't take this lightly, even though some speakers said that this is just a show. And I really look at it. And I must say that I like the design, the idea with putting in townhouse modules along the three, sort of, very attractive in my mind, right? So you get these two-story units with actually access from the street, which sort of is what you see in a lot of cities. So, that I thought was a very smart way of using the difference in height between one end of the property and the other. So, and with regards to the design of the project as such, I think it sort of fits that lot very well, and it, it has some interesting features for the people who are going to live there, and also for surrounding areas. So, we had a comment about it was a nice project, but it was in the wrong place. Well, the thing is that we don't have that many 2.3 acres lots in the city. This is the challenge that we have in our cities, that the areas that the general plan identify, which was worked on for four years to develop, so it's not something that just happens, and, you know, but that was really Hayden Track, the commercial area of Fox Hills, and, and some properties along our major thoroughfares that had the size that could actually accommodate sort of larger development, which is needed. And, you know, we have another project at the NFL Studios that's been in the pipeline for 508 housing units. So, it's, it is, I think, a building that's really going to lift up the Fox Hills area. And I can understand, people are always afraid of change and so on, and increased traffic and so on. Well, commercial areas generates traffic also, so sometimes, you know, it's not necessarily a major increase of traffic. So, but I get that people are worried about it, but I must say that this building with the features and how it looks is one of the better ones I've seen lately. So, I, I have no issues with this, and we, you know, it fits with our general plan, and it fits with our density, which wasn't in place when this project was developed, and it actually really fits with that. So, there is really no issues I have. I know we need to talk about the extended hours, because that's a decision we need to do. And I have been voting on a number of projects over the years where we have allowed extended hours, because there is a benefit to it. It sort of shortens the development time. So I actually have a question for the developer on this issue, right? So, with the suggested extended hours, how many months will it shorten the development time? And how will you mitigate issues early in the morning, late in the evening?
Yeah, it'll shorten the overall timeline by two months. It's a pretty, you know, impactful shortening of the overall construction timeline.
And I will also add, it's not every day, it's not constant. It's, you know, we had a slide up a little bit ago, but it's for earthwork and shoring, excavation, about one hour earlier on weekdays, two hours earlier start time on Saturdays, concrete pours at six non-consecutive days. And then, the tower, putting up the tower to build the thing, the building is two separate three-day events. So, it's kind of intermittent, and really the idea is, you know, we want to do this faster so we can build much-needed housing quicker and bring it to the community a lot faster.
Okay, there it is, yeah.
I got a question on that while you guys are up here, is that okay, Councilmember Erickson? Say this project does go through and we approve the extended hours, is there a number, in case there's issues or whatnot, that the city can get a hold of, or the residents can contact the city, and we can contact you guys directly and make sure that the issues are resolved?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll have signage across the project so people can dial a hotline and leave messages or talk to folks live, if there's any issues.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson. Yeah, and just underscore, Councilmember Erickson asked, or said, later hours, it's only earlier hours, right?
That's correct, not later.
Yeah, not that, sorry.
Well, thank you. So, also with, the issue with future projects, that is always a sort of a tricky issue. And there also I'm going to call on my many years here, is that you don't really know, you know, take the 1111 Jefferson that's been sitting empty now for, what is it, four years? And had to, you know, go back to the bank, and then, so there is so much unknown, so we don't really know. So it's really hard to say what might come, or what might not happen, right? So, of course, there is, there is a concern, which was dealt with in both the housing element that took two years to develop, and then the general plan, so, but I sort of understand those issues, but also, you know, things happens. And we have some projects that never happened, right? So, therefore, it's very hard to say that, okay, it's going to be this many units, you need to really take that into consideration. But I like the design, I think it's very well done. So I will support the project, and I will support the extended hours, because that's been a success, both with Ivy Station and with other projects we have had. It really has helped the surrounding areas to get the construction done in a much faster time. So thank you.
Councilmember Vera?
Thank you, and thanks to all the speakers for coming out and spending the evening with us tonight. You know, I understand the fears and worries of the neighborhood and the residents who came out and spoke. And it's tough, from my perspective, trying to do the right thing, but listening to concerns and making sure that folks feel like their voices are being heard. And we have to, for me, I try to look on both sides of an argument, and the pros and the cons, and see what benefits that this will bring the area. We have to, you know, admit that there's been no development in this area for 20 years. And the revenue, besides the revenue that it'll bring the city, but the benefits in terms of the retail spots that will sort of now start revitalizing that area, and we all talk, you know, we hear multiple conversations about livable, walkable communities, and we heard from Mr. Haas, and I believe TikTok were talking about, you know, people actually being able to now live and walk to work in their community, and they think this was a great opportunity. It is scary, I grant you that, and it instills a lot of fear, the unknown, about what, what could potentially be the disasters of this project moving forward. I think, you know, the developer did a great job in terms of incorporating parking, which is really, parking is not really necessary per se, but you guys went above and beyond, I think, in terms of providing parking. The design is, like Councilmember Erickson said, is, I think, a great design, using the slope and whatnot to incorporate that for the extra height, is, I think, great, great use of the space. And then supporting, you know, our local workers. I think this is overall, like I said, it's scary, but I think there's a whole lot of pros that will enhance the area. And I see Judy giving me the evil eye right now, but I think this is, you know, I think needed. We have development throughout the city, you know, besides the NFL. I think development throughout the city with our ADU's NFL project, what, 500-plus units? So there is development all throughout the city. I think, you know, what unfortunately, I think the crutch or curse for Fox Hills is there's a lot of open land up there, there's a lot of land. Now, if, you know, we're proposing projects on any other land along commercial corridors, I would be as eager to support as this. I think it's great, I think overall it's a great project. I think it brings a lot of benefits to the community. I won't keep on beating a dead horse. I think I agree with Councilmember Erickson in terms of shortening the completion time by extended hours in the AM, by two months, getting this project up and going ASAP, so that they can get out of there and get this housing up and running. So I will be supporting it, I will be supporting the extended AM hours. And, you know, we talked about earlier about community benefits, about keeping that money in the community where the project is being built. And we had agendized, I believe, an item coming up about how we can keep that money specific to the area. I think that's a great idea, you know, these, these folks are going to be dealing with the impact of what is built there. So what better use to keep that money local, whether, you know, infrastructure, bike lanes, whatever it is that that community can truly benefit from, that these projects are being built? So I'm all in favor of that. And once again, thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking.
Thank you. Pretty much everything was said. I, one thing that wasn't said and has been brought up in prior meetings is that I am in favor of having a conversation in the coming year about looking at other areas of Culver City. I think specifically people were asking about Jefferson and possibly Hayden Track to, you know, better incentivize this similar type of density for developers. There is the question about the size of the lots, and whether that incentive is still as strong, even though it's, you know, it's dense, will it attract developers? But I'm very open to that conversation, and as well as what both Councilmember Erickson and I, or Councilmember Vera and I mentioned about, you know, utilizing these impact fees for the community where the, you know, the impact is felt. I think that's important as well. It's a beautiful project, it's so nice, it really is. It's going to provide so much activation for those that already live there. I really do think the community's going to enjoy it. Actually, times are tough in my household, there might be a chance I, we'll see, it's not out of the question. Got distracted on my personal life there. Got distracted on my personal life there. But I do think it's, you know, going to provide an opportunity to revitalize that neighborhood. And, you know, hearing from, you know, there's speakers that have spoken, not just, you know, the labor, but also residents that are in the neighborhood that have also spoken in favor of it. And I'm also hearing, you know, from a couple of employers in the neighborhood who feel that, you know, and this is something I've been talking about generally, how do we reduce traffic overall in the city? And that's to employ more people in Culver City that live in Culver City. And this is an opportunity for that with, I think it was Morgan Stanley and with TikTok, having more housing near where jobs are. That's an opportunity to reduce traffic as well. I trust our staff when they tell me that they've done the work. I'm not an expert. We ask the difficult questions. And I do believe that they've done the work and the study. And I know that the prior city council put a lot of effort into the housing element. And that was ultimately approved. And then this council and the prior council worked on the general plan. Prior councils, I think, on the general plan. So a lot of work was put into analyzing the impacts of a more dense city that we were, you know, kind of forced to go down that path by the HCD and SCAG. So it sounds like we've got agreement on the five points. I, no one spoke tonight against the extended hours. I do, for me, if I was a resident there, I would be concerned about the impact of all the construction. So I think having that shortened overall schedule by just adding an hour in the mornings here and there will benefit the community. I hope the developer does be open and proactive in mitigating any complaints that happen along the way. And I'm sure staff will also accelerate that. So shall I read? Do we have to hit each ones individually or can we do it all at once?
We can do it all at once.
Okay, thank you.
As long as Councilmember Erickson, who's made the motion, agreeing to all the motions in the staff report?
Yeah, one, two, three.
One, two, three. All right. So it's a motion by Councilmember Erickson, a second by Councilmember Vera, and that is to adopt a resolution certifying the project EIR, making sequo required findings and approving the mitigation monitoring and the reporting program, the MMRP, in attachment number one, and introducing an ordinance to approve the comprehensive plan, density, and other bonus incentives, general plan map amendment, and the zoning code map amendment, thereby creating planned development number 18, subject to the conditions of approval as stated in said ordinance, and to adopt a resolution granting the extended constructions hours request, subject to the conditions of approval as stated in the ordinance. Please vote. And with the recusal of Councilmember Puza and Mayor Meg Moran, this passes unanimously for those voting. They've recused themselves because of location. And I'll take a moment to go get them. All right, we're going to move on to A1.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dmitry, Director of Public Works. This item before you tonight facilitates a discussion about climate resiliency for our city. And the second part of this item was to look into the possibility of joining the C40 organization. So regarding the first part of this, which is the climate resiliency, I am very happy to report that there is an entire section in the general plan update dedicated to the environment and climate resiliency. And on the second page of my report, we listed just a few examples. And I'll go through them very briefly. There is element one, community health and environment justice. This element identifies disadvantaged districts in the city and addresses the unique and compounded health risks to these neighborhoods. For example, this section sets the goal for our residents and workers to breathe clean air and not be exposed to hazardous materials. Element nine, greenhouse gas reduction. This element addresses sustainability and the environmental, social equity, and, excuse me, economic impacts from climate change and forms the city's climate action and adaptation plan. For example, this section includes the goal for the city to develop a plan and achieve several greenhouse gas emission reduction targets, including becoming carbon neutral by 2045. Element 10, conservation. This element addresses the stewardship and conservation of cultural and neutral resources, excuse me, natural resources. For example, this section includes the goal that Biona Creek continues to mitigate flooding, but its native ecologies are to be restored. And it is to become a scenic, multipurpose, open space and recreational corridor. Element 10, safety. This element evaluates and mitigates the risk of climate change and natural hazards such as seismic and geological activity, wildfires and flooding. For example, this section includes the goal to support resilient building design by helping residents weatherize homes to keep them cooler and warmer, to become energy efficient and to improve indoor air quality. Regarding the second request that council made a couple of months ago, which is looking into the possibility of joining the C40 organization. C40 is an organization of approximately 96 large cities throughout the world, including Los Angeles. The mayors of C40 cities are committed to the goal of reducing their city's greenhouse gas emissions to avoid having the planet's temperature rise more than 1.5 degrees Celsius, which is about 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit. Staff contacted C40 and were informed that membership is limited to cities with 3 million or more in population and that they are capped, and they have capped their membership by region. Because of the size of our city, we do not qualify to join the C40 organization. Some cities in the US and worldwide have declared climate emergencies. There isn't one set definition for what a climate emergency city is. A climate emergency city is a city that has acknowledged the need to take action on the causes and effects of climate change. Climate emergency cities may have plans in place to reduce their carbon emissions and increase their resilience to climate change or both. For example, Portland, Oregon's plan includes goals to reduce carbon emissions by 50% by the year 2030 and to net zero by 2050. In Napa, California, their climate emergency resolution aims to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions from public and private operations by 2030. Much like the examples provided above, the city's general plan update adopts similar measures, including achieving net zero greenhouse gases by 2045. And this concludes my report. And now we can have a discussion if you wish to do so.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
There are.
Okay.
We have six.
Okay, can we hear from those folks? Thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Steve Siegel, followed by Melissa Sanders.
How much time, please? I couldn't hear the time.
Three minutes.
No, thank you very much. So I guess when I first read this, I thought this was, I wasn't sure if it was serious or not. So we're talking about climate emergencies. And you think of Culver City, we have almost perfect weather here and in fact, probably the best weather on the planet, save maybe Orange County, San Diego and Hawaii. So I guess if you're going to talk about climate emergencies, a couple of questions need to be answered, such as, number one, what exactly does Culver City contribute to a climate problem or issue in, on the planet, or even locally or in the state? It's a very, very small city. And the second question would be, if Culver City stopped any and all polluting activities, however you define that, how would that affect the city, or show the surrounding cities, county or state? Probably not very much. So when we hear about a climate emergency, why would we declare one when there's no weather issues ever in our area? There's some fires and that may be due to state policies also. But other than that, we have no issues whatsoever. So what it sounds like, though, is an opening to take other agenda items and push them through. It's what it always sounds like when there's an emergency or a crisis. So I asked the council, the city manager and staff to consider avoiding the use of words emergencies and crises to push through agenda items because it's somewhat annoying to the residents. As far as C40, C40 cities are 3 million residents and up usually. There's some smaller cities. They're Matt, New York, LA, Mumbai. They're massive cities. We have no business entering this arena and even be anywhere near part of it. So don't we have things to focus on within the city that are more relevant to us? So there is no emergency. There's no proof that Culver City is contributing to it. And by the way, if you're interested in reducing or eliminating all gas-powered vehicles, what people don't necessarily realize is that electric vehicles are very heavy. And the tire particles, the rubber particles that come off tires are very toxic and they come way off more on electric vehicles. So you have a net increase in pollution sometimes with electric vehicles compared to gas-powered cars and their tire particles plus exhaust. So that's a fact. So electric vehicles are contributing to lung issues very significantly. So if you think that these solutions are easy, they're not necessarily easy. So please refrain from calling anything an emergency that isn't. And please refrain from wasting time on things like joining C40, which we're not even close and shouldn't be part of. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Melissa Sanders, followed by Marcy Bond.
Hi, good evening. I don't see a timer, so I'll look at the time. So I'm not quite sure why we would actually need to join this climate emergency. It sounds like we've already kind of prepared ourselves for environmental impact and climate change, et cetera. My concern if we did join would be the possibility of an undue burden of extra regulations, extra requirements, extra rules to meet those standards in an incredibly tiny city that's already going into a deficit spending process for budget-wise. So I think that we're pretty well, you know, already in our various plans that we, of course, always want to do what's best for the planet. And I don't feel this is a necessary new step. I would say regardless that if we're really concerned about climate change, then there should be some kind of addition requirement for all developments to have a minimum amount of green space, to plant trees, you know, looking at what materials they're being used and things of that nature. You know, you guys just approved this huge development. I don't know what they're planning to use, but we would do a lot more for the environment if we're using those best materials, if that development is required to not just put trees where that is, but also maybe, you know, pay for some trees elsewhere. But that's my, but that's, overall, that's my big concern. I'm concerned about a tiny city with not a lot of money in our future being required to do things if we join an organization that we won't be able to afford. And it may not be necessary for our, you know, five square miles in the middle of the county. So just take a look at that. I don't really feel like it's necessary. I think we're all very environmentally concerned already. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcy Bond, followed by Leah Pressman.
I also have similar concerns as the previous speakers. I would also like to say that as we look at this, we might consider the companies that we already have in Culver City. Many of them are already running AI. I don't know if you know how much AI consumes in energy. And the fact that, and it consumes a lot of energy. I know this because I am, I actually edit for grad students who are computer science majors. And so I'm editing a lot of papers. And they talk about the amount of energy that is consumed in one iteration of training, one iteration which could be anywhere from a few minutes to several hours. We're looking at 1,280 megawatts of power. That produces 520 megatons of CO2 into the air, which is equivalent to 112 gas-powered engines. So I want you to consider this when, I mean, we have Amazon, we have TikTok, we have Apple, we have all of these big companies that are now using AI. And how is this going to not only impact our economy, but what are you going to be asking the residents to do when we are not the ones who are consuming and creating this amount of carbon footprint? We also need to consider that if this is the case, we need to plant a heck of a lot more trees and a lot more green space. And I agree with what Melissa said. I was thinking, hey, it would be great to have on top of that building a garden where people who live there could actually have a garden if they chose to, personal gardens, the building, but promote because plants turn CO2 to oxygen and ultimately improve our air. So these are all things to be thinking about. Rather than calling a climate emergency, I think we need to be doing some serious looking into what it is that our city needs and focus on what our needs are rather than something that I don't even think we're going to be able to touch at this time. Let's do what we can instead of this whole thing. There are so many more concerns in our city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leah Pressman, followed by Michelle Weiner. Yeah, you've been unmuted. Go ahead. Leah, are you able to hear us in the council chamber? Looks like we're having some difficulty. I'll move on to Michelle Weiner. Michelle, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I appreciate...
I appreciate our city and our staff for being forward-thinking and looking for opportunities to get in line with other cities, other communities. And though we are not large enough to be part of the C-40, we certainly can avail ourselves of the studies that have been done in order to guide the cities that are a part of it, one of whom is Los Angeles. So we can look at what Los Angeles is doing. They have a special division now that's for climate emergency. And we can make sure that we're using all of the latest data in order to reach our goals. So while we do have, we have already outlined in our general, general plan, a path forward, and we have very urgent goals to meet, which is wonderful. It's, it's very helpful to be able to be in tune and aligned with Los Angeles in, in ways forward. So I agree with the other speakers about keeping an eye towards green space and opportunities to increase, increase our urban greenery, of course. That, that has to be part of the whole picture. And there is so much more that we can do, and I don't need to tell you, because you all have access to even more information. And I'm just really glad that our city is looking at this, that we're considering being a part of it in, in a small way, in the way that we can as a small city, and, and that our city manager can assist in us meeting our goals. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Susan D. Beneditas. You've been unmuted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, and all interested parties. I was only at 7:30 this evening when I was made aware of this item. Thus, my comments will be brief, but they come from me as a social analyst with 52-plus years as an environmentalist with a PhD and as a mental health professional. I founded Greener Way Associates, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, which is built on the UN's Earth Charter ethical principles. We've developed and are implementing a practical template to create climate resilient communities from the ground up. And guess what, folks? It's not going to cost more than gardening and rainwater installations at large capacity for those who are concerned about spending. This inclusive project delivers neighborhood emergency preparedness while addressing climate amelioration through carbon sequestration from, from creating a local food supply, which includes large-capacity rainwater catchment, storage, and reuse. And thanks to our fire department last year hosting Dr. Lucy Jones' Community Resilience Program, Greener Way has incorporated that aspect into our neighborhood community climate resilience building to address the wildfires, flooding, and earthquakes which threaten our city. Our Greener Way team planned to propose our plan to you with a slideshow in early December. Perhaps we can present it to you sooner. Please let me know with whom I should get in touch to take this to the next level. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Okay. Thank you. Were we not able to get the other speaker who was having issues?
I reached out to her, but there was no response.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. All right. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you. Thanks to the speakers. Dmitri, thank you for taking my call earlier today and really going over some of this. And just wanted to share, well, one, your, your thoughts on, let me, let me re, yeah, let me go back. I want to share sort of a brief description of the letter that we received from Troy and some of the conversation that we had about the greenhouse gas reduction element of the new general plan serves as our climate action plan. This element includes a work plan with 20 projects for the city to implement over the next 10 years. And it says C attached, and I looked at the attachment, and it really basically covers, outside of these elements listed here, much, much more in-depth analysis and elements. Rather than establishing a new position or division, we are relying on our existing, existing departments and staff for implementation. So Public Works would be taking, Public Works and Planning Development will take a portion of it. And then my understanding is the Transportation Department, and we'll take the greenhouse gas, right, and planning, I'm sorry. And then Transportation will take the GHG emission inventory, correct? So really, it sounds like there is really, and this is informative, it gives us sort of what's going on right now, and I like to see that we're already had thought about this and have implemented this, plus much more to come in the next 20 years. So in my opinion, I think it sounds like there's really no action needed. We're already doing everything that's said, and in terms of the C-40, we fall well below the threshold of, of membership. So I guess all in all, I, I think there's no action needed. I appreciate the work that you, your department, and everybody else are doing. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Erickson.
Well, thank you. Well, the C-40 is, you know, for big cities. And to sort of call us a climate emergency city, I think we should be very careful how we use the word emergency. And, you know, if you, if you think about this, the whole discussion started with global warming, then we had climate change, and since those things, you know, got sort of too familiar for people, I guess, then suddenly, you know, we had to have emergency and climate catastrophe. And, you know, the temperature increase is real. It's just that we need to be very smart if we're going to fix it. And panic is usually a very bad advisor. So I don't think it's, I, I think it's actually detrimental to call these things emergency and catastrophe, because sort of most people say, well, what can I do? I sort of, you know. But there are things we can do. There are smart things we can do. And I think our general plan actually has listed a lot of things that we can do that smartly actually affect this. So I would leave it with, at that, absolutely. And if you want to talk more about all the catastrophe, emergency we see around the world, I, I'd be willing to do that, because they are not more now than they were 20 years ago. They're actually less. So we shouldn't call it emergency. We should fix the problem with smart solutions. So thank you for putting all those references together. You know, we are moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Puzza.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to the public comments and for the staff report, and thanks for the info about the general plan. To the people who don't think we're in a climate crisis or emergency, the scientific evidence is unequivocal, climate change is a threat to human well-being and the health of the planet. Between 2014 and 2023, the world, on average, increased 1.2 degrees Celsius warmer, and 2024 is virtually certain to end up as the world's hottest year on record. And this has been caused by human activity, by the use, mainly by the use of fossil fuels, so coal, oil, and gas, in homes, factories, and transport systems. The United Nations Undersecretary General said knowledge is the cornerstone of effective climate action. In the Southwest, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, you know, noticed that, or has notated that climate change has caused increased heat, drought, and insect outbreaks. Wildfires are more numerous and severe, and there's been a decline in water supplies and much more. And even if we halted all carbon emissions today, the carbon emissions currently in the atmosphere would continue to impact the climate. The Center for Climate Integrity recently did a presentation at the Sustainability Subcommittee. They've done studies about the costs of climate change in Los Angeles. They estimate, and they consider this a conservative estimate, that it will cost $12.5 billion through 2040, and $9 billion will be incurred by municipal governments. And the cost, estimated cost to Culver City is $43 million. So a lot of that, the bulk of that would be energy costs to heat and cool buildings and store and water drainage infrastructure, among other things. So there is a lot of great info in the general plan, and I appreciate everything that's in there. But I want to make, ensure, especially with the incoming, you know, the climate-denying administration that's coming into office, that we are ensuring that we're guided by the general plan, approved goals and data. So I am fine with also having staff come back to counsel with a climate emergency resolution that lays out, you know, more of the ways that we're going to do this. Although, LA does do, I know one of the public comments talked about LA. They do have a climate emergency mobilization office, but they do get the public more involved. So I think it's really important to increase public participation in these conversations. And then also, they can work with the Sustainability Subcommittee to, to further develop the resolution and other plans. So I would support a resolution, moving that forward, and then maybe working it out in the Sustainability Subcommittee as to what that exactly would entail. Thank you, Mayor.
Just to make sure I heard you correctly, Councilmember Puzza, you're, you're requesting a resolution or further conversation with Sustainability Subcommittee and staff about a potential, is it an action plan or a specific declaration?
Oh, sorry. Does, can you hear me better? The Subcommittee first, and then the resolution for the climate emergency.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brian.
Thank you. Dmitri, thank you for your report, and I appreciate the email that went out right before our meeting tonight, that Councilmember Vera was referring to, the general plan element on greenhouse gas. I mean, it's 16 pages. Councilmember Puzza said, you know, there's a lot of info in there. What, there's, there's, it's a plan. It's a, it's part of the general plan. There's a timeline for each item, everything from long-term to very short-term, within one to five years, or presently engaged in. So 16 pages long, very detailed, and I really appreciate you pointing that out. I kind of lost track of that as time passed from the general plan conversation, even though we just did it. And also, on tonight's agenda, A2, the Legislative and Policy Platform, I was going through this, and we've got, I don't know how many, a couple dozen-plus bullet points that deal with policy that, that we direct staff to focus on. I'll just read a few. Under water conservation, water quality, and air quality, increase the city's ability to comply with environmental regulations, improve air quality in Culver City and surrounding areas, conduct greenhouse gas inventories, climate action plans, and other work that will help further the goals of AB 32, the Global Warming Solutions Act of 2006. Recognize the importance of and continue to move forward on California's clean energy transition and protection of California communities. Prioritize public health and safety and the environment, including protection of air quality and groundwater resources. Ensure that oil and gas wells are properly plugged and abandoned, that oil and gas premises are adequately remediated and restored to near-natural conditions. Promote reliable, affordable, and renewable energy. You know, it goes on and on and on. There's, I could keep reading if everyone wanted me to, but I know no one does. So we're, we're focusing on that, not just in our actions that are found in the general plan, and specific, I mean, and as you pointed out, not just in the greenhouse gas element, but in the other, the community health and environmental justice, conservation, and safety. I mean, we're, we're doing a lot, and I know that staff has a plan and a roadmap to follow to, to execute all this. So I'm confident we're going to do that. And there's specific goals that are tied to California's goals, you know, 100% non-fossil fuel-based transportation fleet by 2040, I believe, you know, many other goals. Our eye is clearly on the mission of, of reducing our impact on, on the climate. And I'm not afraid of saying climate emergency. I, I just, I just think that this is, it's not going to do anything more than what we're already doing here. And I think it's just an added layer of time dedicated to staff, and it's, making this resolution is not going to change your, your path forward. It's in our general plan. It's in our, it's in our Legislative and Policy Platform goals. So I'm good with no action, no further action. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to the public for your comments this evening. I appreciate, I believe this was agenda-ed by Councilmember Puzza, so I appreciate your leadership in recognizing climate change as the emergency that it absolutely is, and trying to really codify that very explicitly into the emergency that is facing us now and will certainly face our children and their children. It doesn't seem like there is consensus here to have a declaration or to move to Subcommittee, but hopefully this is something that I might be able to come back as we move forward, as I do have grave concerns on the federal level and how that might impact us on the state and local level. And in times like these, I do think it's really important to reaffirm, recommit, and be very clear about the threats that we are facing collectively, and be very serious about the work that is ahead of us. I will just say, you know, we are no stranger to wonderful plans that we work with, fantastic consultants that are very lovely and beautiful and meaningful, but we are, sometimes it takes us some time to see some action with those plans. Again, that's just, I'm thinking specifically about some of the Foxhills work that has taken some time, and there, there are other projects that I could call on. But again, it's not a finger-pointing kind of thing. It's just noticing things. So sometimes when you utilize the word emergency, things sometimes get a little bit more traction. Here is something I've observed. So hopefully, this is something that we might see back before us in our, as the council moves forward. And again, thank you so much for your leadership, Councilmember Puzza, for flagging this for, for us in light of everything that is going on. So I can thank you again, and we will move now to...
Madam Mayor.
To. We're going to move to A2 unless you want to make a motion?
No, I may want to make a comment.
Okay, another one?
Yeah, of course.
11 o'clock, but let's have a comment.
Well, we usually go to 1:30.
Oh, well, not this evening. Trying to get out your...
Maybe. So, you know, this is, this is sort of, and it's also something that Councilmember Puzza said that triggered this, right? So, you know, I stated that, you know, temperature is rising... So, you know, I stated that, you know, temperature is rising. We know that, right? So in the, in the two first decades of 2000, right? So the first 20 years of this decade, or this, well, the last 20 years. And the, the temperature has risen with about half a degree Celsius. And this is sort of, you know, we live in California, but you know, I have some connection to a colder climate. And, and when you look at this on a global level, right? And these are verified by the United Nations. So the heat has caused about 116,000 annual deaths globally during the last 20 years. But you know that there is so much more people dying from cold. There's actually nine times more people dying from the cold. And, you know, that's serious. So the warmer temperature that we have experienced has actually saved 283,000 lives a year from dying from cold. And this is what I'm saying, is that this emergency thing is that we look at one side of the equation, but there is another, right? Fires. We see a lot of fires. Well, that, that has changed also. That's actually globally, there's a lot less fires today than it was 20 years ago. And there's a lot of this data, right? So that's why I'm saying it's not an emergency. Temperatures are rising. We need to deal with it, but we need to deal with it smartly. And by sort of calling it an emergency and panicking, and we're looking at, oh, we need to do something, you know, all this heat wave, but actually there is something else happening. And for heat waves, you know, France, after 2003, when they had that terrible heat wave, they passed a law where every senior citizen home, sort of assisted living homes and so on, were mandated to have air conditioning. That has now saved 10 times the number of death, lowered the number of deaths 10 times because they put in air conditioning on the senior living facilities. And so what I'm saying is, we need to think smart about this, and we don't, we shouldn't be driven by panic, because there are ways, and our general plan actually works. So, you know, sorry for, I have a lot more of this, but...
So what I'm hearing...
The, the idea was when you start to talk about the heat, you know, there is also cold. Where I come from in Sweden, there's a lot of cold. People die from the cold every year. So, yeah.
So what I'm hearing you say is, we're not in a climate crisis?
I wouldn't call it crisis.
Okay, thank you.
We have a challenge.
Thank you.
It's a challenge, you know, it's, we need to fix it, but smartly. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Moving on to A2.
Thank you.
Would you like a brief staff report?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Shelley Wolfberg, Assistant to the City Manager, and bringing before you the Legislative Policy Platform for your consideration. The purpose of this platform is to, is to state the city's positions on issues it faces and to provide the process by which its interests can be protected at the state and federal levels. Staff has provided an opportunity for city departments to review the current plan and make suggestions, and also staff has met with the Subcommittee to go over these edits. Therefore, tonight, you have an opportunity to discuss the Legislative Policy Platform and provide direction. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
We have 11.
Okay. Thank you.
Our first speaker is Marcy Bond, followed by Leah Pressman. Let's see if she's online. Not seeing her in council chambers or online. We're going to press it on here. I'm going to try Leah Pressman. Leah, you've been unmuted. Go ahead. No response. Our next speaker is August Miller. August. Not seeing them online or in council chamber. Julia Alexander. Stephen Shaler. Mary DeVall.
Evening, Mayor McMorn, Vice Mayor O'Brien, and City Council. My name is Mary DeVall, and I have been a resident of Culver City for nearly 30 years. Over these years, I have noticed that almost all residents, speaking on a variety of topics or issues, ask for more transparency from city government. No one asks for less transparency. And yet, here we are, at the end of a long holiday weekend, at the end of a packed agenda, poised to adopt an important policy platform without a community engagement process. The 2016 resolution was not included in the staff report that we saw, that the public saw. So we had to look for it, and luckily we were capable of doing that. But I'm sure there are plenty of people out there who were not capable and who didn't understand that there was such an additional document from 2016 to compare the current one with. That also is a fine example of non-transparency. Doesn't invite people into the process. I'm appalled and frankly a little angry that the paragraph on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Action Plan and the Complete Streets Policy were both deleted in the current version. The Action Plan was the product of years of work and had comments and input from hundreds of community members, as well as the B-PAC, and it has not been completely actualized yet. Neither has the Complete Streets Policies. My understanding that the staff is still accepting policies on it, and yes, now it has disappeared from this document. Therefore, I'm asking you tonight to postpone this agenda item, to not take action on it until this whole thing can be studied by the Ad Hoc 2025 Legislative and Policy Subcommittee. It should also be sent to the B-PAC and any other committees or commissions whose expertise may be needed to help shape an inclusive document. By doing this, you will also give many more chances for the public to participate, probably in a situation more informal and more accessible for them. Believe it or not, many people don't want to come to City Council and speak. It's not a welcoming environment for many of our community members. I don't know who is responsible for rushing this item to the agenda tonight, but frankly, it reeks of deceit and dishonesty. It's extremely disrespectful toward everyone who lives in Culver City. I think we could do better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Weiner. Michelle, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Yeah, I, I had the same problem. I was looking at this item, and I, and I, and I read the new resolution, and I sort of vaguely remembered things from 2016. And then I went back to look at the attachments and saw that there was no attachment of 2016. Then I had to go back to the website and start hunting around to try and find it, and it was not an easy process, and I've been reading agendas for a really long time. So I feel like just on the basis of that alone, it would be a good idea to postpone this item and then consider how one would amend it. Because the first thing I noticed was, you know, comparing the two, and I really didn't have time to compare the two before the meeting began, and so I had to halt that activity. But I did notice the absence of the Bicycle Pedestrian Action Plan. It was specifically named, as was Complete Streets, and we're in the middle of a process of getting community engagement around creating a Complete Streets policy, which we need in order to get grants, grant funding for important projects. So to eliminate that from, from this resolution seems ill-advised, and the fact that there was a B-PAC meeting at the end of October, and there was no mention of this, no chance for that body to weigh in on, you know, at least that section, the, the transportation and mobility sections of this resolution, seems kind of a waste. You know, they, they're there to provide advice and to not ask their advice, and that seems really kind of a slight and, and not okay. So I could go on. If I had had time to look at the various sections more carefully, I probably would have more to add, but I would, I would ask you, I would request that you, you at least make amendments around mobility and transportation if you must pass it tonight. Otherwise, I would recommend that you postpone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Druziano Solari.
Hello, hi. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi there. My name is Druziano Solari. I'm an eight and going-on-nine-year resident of Culver City, and want to say thank you to all, to the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members for being there at this late hour. So no doubt you folks are very, very tired. I'll just echo what the previous two speakers said so eloquently, beginning with Mary DeVall. First of all, just stated up front, I too am strongly encouraging the council to postpone this vote, or postpone the decisions and so forth, because it's an immense amount of agenda items that are involved within. Having looked at the 22, 23-page item earlier today, it's, there's a whole lot of very serious stuff there, and a three-day weekend is not sufficient for either the public or the city, coming in City Council to, to get their heads around, let alone at 11:14 and no doubt 12:15 and onward before a decision is made. So again, echoing Mary DeVall, who spoke so eloquently, the transparency issue is real. We in the public feel that, you know, it's got to be transparent. Culver City has done a knock-up job on that in the past, so we want to continue with that sentiment. And as well, when Michelle Weiner said it's not okay to kind of push this through, last-minute, last item, agenda item at this late hour, it really is not okay. So I would just like to go back for a second on very nice points that Councilmember Erickson and Councilmember O'Brien and Councilmembers Vera made earlier, if I can remember. Forgive me, I just got off a flight from Japan the night before last. I'm a little incoherent. So folks that just had a normal three-day weekend are struggling with this. I'm really struggling with this. Mr. Erickson held up the notebook with the decision on the development project, literally saying, saying, "We really take a serious look at this. This is very serious." And I'm happy that he did that, and I no doubt think that he will take a serious look at this item as well. Councilmember Vera made the point of really wanting to listen to the public. Well, the public really needs to get their minds around this issue so they can speak eloquently about it, and you in fact can listen to them. And Vice Mayor O'Brien made the comment, it's slipping my mind, I knew it would, something along the same, about having a conversation in the future with developers. So conversations along those lines are extremely important. No doubt conversations about what we're considering now are extremely important. So I guess 16 seconds left. I'm urging the whole council to postpone this decision, please, for all, for the public, for yourselves, and then for the debate that would ensue. Thank you for your time and being active at this late hour. Thanks so much.
Do we have Karen Hillsburg? Not seeing them online. Leo Martinez? Not seeing them online either. We're going to circle back to Leah Pressman.
Hello. I don't see the countdown clock on... Oh, no, I don't see it. So I'll have to do my best. Can, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, good. Good evening, Council. Come before you to ask you to vote no on the policy platform as currently ridding. This platform seems hastily slugged together, advocates for, advocates for some terrible progressive policy, and in many spots seems to fly in the face of community values. Its plan grants unelected officials such as city manager and police the power to interpret vague platform statements and how staff go around the council in shaping policy, where we elect our council members to direct policy. The platform has the city staff fighting for terrible policies. Policies are residents' homes. The platform removes the bike and pedestrian plan at a time when pedestrians and cyclists are being killed and gravely injured on our streets. Residents care about street safety. Much-vaunted resident opinion poll on Move project revealed that most residents support how Move Culver City improves safety for walking and biking and increased transportation alternatives. Among other terrible policies, such as the use of facial recognition, the law enforcement section ensures opposition to the reforms of Proposition 47, ignoring many studies that show that this approach reduces crime and recidivism, and Culver Cities having rejected Prop 13 at the ballot box. The police are encouraged to use our taxpayer dollars to lobby against the will of the people, on top of the millions police associations spend lobbying for aggressive law and murder policies. Elected by some of the widest margins we see in our elections, Culver City's Assembly Member and State Senator opposes policy of rolling back criminal justice reforms. Assemblymember Bryan and Senator Smallwood Quavis led the opposition to Proposition 36. The platform's policy, the maximum amount of a pollutant that a water body can receive and still meet water quality standards should be achievable and cost-effective, and that a city should be shielded from litigation if they've tried and failed to meet those requirements. It's actually terrifying. So if we become another Flint, Michigan, and it is too damn expensive to limit water pollutions to levels that won't make us sick, the city is off the hook. Huh! Please leave council time to get it right. It is too important a document to have our lawmakers rush the entire 24-page document over a holiday weekend. Thank you. I yield my time.
Our next speaker is Nancy Barba.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. I'm also calling to request that you delay any vote on action, sorry, on Agenda Item A2. This 24-page Legislative and Policy Platform deserves... deserves a complete, thorough, and democratic review by our public and, more importantly, our incoming council. I'm concerned that rushing it through now during a very jam-packed agenda on the heels of an election is an attempt to sideline the community's voice and really feels like a scramble from this current council majority or staff to formalize certain ideologies that do not align with the community's values. Several key elements in this proposal, including those previsiting to propositions and removing the Bicycle and Pedestrian Action Plan, require more careful consideration from the community. It introduces also some new policies on facial recognition technology and local zoning authorities that many residents have not had any time to consider or discuss or assess. Keep in mind that we now have giant billboards that can do facial recognition. So how is this going to affect our community? Our community has voted against similar measures in the past. Let's respect our voice, and please postpone this item to allow for a more transparent review process and particularly provide input from incoming council members. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker for this item.
Mayor?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I appreciate giving me a moment. I'll keep it really brief. I believe this document is nothing short of a reflection of what we stand for, of our values. So I agree that I believe it needs more input from the public. It is really long and complicated, and, you know, as someone that worked in state policy for an advocacy group, legislative priorities from the city, support from cities like Culver City can make or break whether a bill becomes law. We've seen it, you know, Culver City, for its size, is pretty influential and well-known, even in Sacramento. And so the support of our city can determine whether, you know, certain policies advance. And I do believe it's problematic that, you know, this legislative platform removes mentions of Complete Streets, of the Bicycle Pedestrian Action Plan, that it, you know, singles out, for example, opposing efforts that usurp local zones, allow the state to say, hey, if you're within, you know, X half-mile of a transit stop, you don't have to require parking, or cities cannot require parking. And that's a really big environmental policy that helped create more livable, walkable cities. And Culver City was able to say, hey, we support that. And that actually helped the bill pass. And when we, you know, this document is going to guide whether we allow and whether we put our support behind future impactful measures like those in the future. So I do also join my neighbors in urging us to review this properly. It's a really big decision, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
And that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Councilmember there.
Actually, I'd like to hear from our Ad-Hoc Subcommittee on their views and thoughts on this before I comment. If that's possible.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got asked by this council in early this year to start working on this. And unfortunately, we've been a little slow, and it's sort of falls on Councilmember O'Brien and myself. We haven't had, we have had problems getting meetings where we could sit down and move this forward. So it's not rushed at all. It's actually been delayed. And the last time we passed something like this was in 2016. And that was done exactly the same way we've done it now. No difference whatsoever. And also, there's a lot of things in the old version that doesn't apply anymore. It's sort of totally outdated. And there is, you know, we heard someone talking about local control. Well, that's been in these forever. We always have had local control as a main policy of this council. So the comments from some speakers about that, you know, we should listen to our Assemblymember and our Senator, yeah, to some part. But actually, local control is very important. And we are a shorter city, which also allows us to have a little more local control. So with regards to this, there isn't a lot of changes here, actually. And a lot of it is staff that updates this based on new legislation and changes that happen. So, you know, we don't have staff in there that's redundant, in a sense. And it's also, the purpose is not to explain sort of internal policy of the city. The purpose of this is to have some guidelines for staff to understand how to respond to state and federal legislation that comes our way. So some of these things that are mentioned that should be in here doesn't really apply on a state level, right? So there's been some cleanup also for that reason, because the purpose is not to have sort of our internal policy and stuff, but it's actually has to have some direction for staff to react to state legislation. So, and this, you know, document replaces the document 2016, and should have been changed a long time ago. But these are really tough works, and staff has worked really hard to put this together, because it's a lot of heavy lifting to check everything and remove things that shouldn't be here because it violates state law or new state laws has appeared or federal laws. So I think that this document is very well-worked and researched with staff. And I would move forward to accept this as it is. And if future council wants to do other, that's, you know, that's what really should happen, right? So we shouldn't have a document since 2016. These should be changed, right? So, but this is much better than the 2016 with regards to our legislative needs. So I don't see any reason to delay this. It's been held back because we haven't been able to get our meetings coordinated, so. Thank you.
In terms of process, I agree with Councilmember Erickson. I recall mostly kind of cleaning up redundancies. And I think we eliminated a couple of categories that, like the, what was it, the FAA? Things like that that were out of date. There definitely were redundancies. And, you know, there's a lot to this, so I can't remember every little thing that we did. But in written comments from folks that I saw ahead of time, before the meeting, and then hearing from folks that spoke tonight about specifically bicycle concerns. You know, I admit I don't know down to the word what's within those other documents. And I know that they're currently being worked on right now. And as Councilmember Erickson said, I think that this is an organic document that, or policy list that is meant to be updated. But just, I looked at the mobility infrastructure section and support efforts to maintain and increase funding for ... pedestrian and bicycle projects to enhance safety. Advocate for the preservation and enhancement of funding for the Safe Roots to Schools program. Implement the Vision Zero Initiative and other programs, policies, or initiatives that prioritize transportation safety and pursue the elimination of death and severe injury crashes on our roadways. You know, it doesn't go into minutia, but I think that these should be, generally speaking, broad. And I don't think we should halt it because there's a new council. There's always new councils coming in every two years. And yes, there's going to be, and I'm prepared. We're going to have some different priorities with the incoming council. So I think, I know that I worked hard to, and I know that Swilfer worked really hard on this, and I really appreciate it. She probably worked equally. It's hard trying to get us to focus on it. But, because it is a lot of work. But I think it's a really clean and concise way to guide our staff. Like Councilmember Erickson said, eight years ago, when this was done the last time, it was done in the same way. So was that council trying to hide what they were doing? So, I mean, obviously, I was on the Subcommittee, so I support what's in this. And I think we should move forward with it. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Vera.
Thank you both for your explanation. Shelley, thank you for all the hard work that you did on this. I know, you know, you put your heart into things. I really appreciate all your hard work. That being said, I'll keep it brief. I'll be in support of this. I think it's a great platform in which things can grow. So I'm, we can leave it at that and pass it on to Councilmember Fusa. Thank you, Shelley.
Great. Thank you. Was the Bicycle Pedestrian Action Plan and Complete Streets removed?
It was more of a consolidation of those topics to just include them or make sure it's not duplicated with another item. So that's why. It was just for clarity, and I think nothing beyond that. And for this document.
Okay. Do we know why Prop 47 and Prop 57 were included?
Yes. Staff did additional research on some of the laws that have been passed since the last adoption of the document. So those were considered and reviewed by staff. But specifically, I would defer to the police department, so, but I know they're not here.
Okay. Also, we don't know that. Do we know why we would regulate rather than ban facial recognition?
I think...
It's not we.
Okay, we're going to take turns, Councilmember Erickson.
This is important. It's not we regulate. This is what needs to be responded, that the state should regulate.
Okay.
So it's not us, right? This is talking to our legislator.
Councilmember Erickson, I'm going to ask for you to refrain from any further comments until Councilmember Fusa completes his comments. Thank you so much for respecting.
Do you know why we'd use the word "regulate" rather than "ban"? And it's fine if we don't know.
Just not sure. It was just about regulating any policies that would come out of Washington or Sacramento.
Right, right.
We'd want to consider. But, yeah, no, I hear you.
It's, just trying to just get to the point. There's a lot unknowns. Was local control in the 2016 version?
I think not specifically. This is newer language. Preserving local control and promoting fiscal stability. And some of these items were suggested to move to the front of the document to apply to most, you know, or all subject matter in the document itself. So that was why, that's one of the reasons you're seeing it in that section.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And I know I'm throwing it a lot. And then last question, in 2016, was it approved, I don't really, was it done before the month, was it done the month before a new council was seated?
I think, actually, the previous one was adopted on December 12, 2016.
Okay.
According to my notes.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just was going to mention that, because I pulled up the document as well. Local control is mentioned through, in various places in the 2016 policy.
Thank you. Great. Thank you for the staff report, and thanks for the public comments. I do agree with comments about transparency. I do think this needs to be postponed for the new configuration of council, whatever that may be. I mean, this is a reflection of policy moving forward. And so we will have a new council, so it should reflect that. We should just wait for the 2025 Ad-Hoc Policy and Legislative Committee. We don't want to waste staff time or the public's time. You know, there wasn't the original document included in the report. And so members of the public tonight and through email notified me that was confusing to know what was changed. And I think it's important to include them in this process. There were many good changes, but there was some concerns and a lot of unknowns. So, I mean, we're in no rush, so I would agree to postpone this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for community members that spoke this evening. Assistant City Manager Swilfer, can you just describe the timeline for the typical, like, state legislative process? Like, when it begins and when bills are, you know, wrap up typically?
We start getting information about bills, new bills being introduced in January. And we just monitor some bills, or two-year bills, as you may be aware. And sometimes there's gotten amended, so we're keeping an eye on those things.
And when are bills typically, like, when do folks typically ask for letters of support from, for example, a city? Is there a typical timeline, right from the start, midway point, June?
I think, to my knowledge, it can depend a lot about the content of the bill itself. And if there are changes that the legislator feels strongly about or just really needs our support, it can happen at any time during the process. And sometimes we get requests, urge the governor to sign, which is the last step. So it's happened that way too, Mayor.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Typically, how many, on average, letters of support do you think we send to the state?
I'd say, yeah, for bills, we try to track 50 for us, because it does get unwieldy. And so there is just maybe a quarter of those that we would take positions on for the city council. So whatever rises to the top, we really want to tackle.
I appreciate that. And similar for federal legislation, do we have an average about how many bills that were, or legislation that we're tracking versus what we actually send letters on?
For this past year, it's been a limited number from the federal legislation that we're tracking. we're tracking, and some bills don't, didn't have any movement, or we're still waiting for the next decision at the federal level to know where the bill is going. So not that many for federal.
So like, maybe less than 10?
Yes.
And as it pertains to the process for this revision since 2016, that primarily took place in 2024, correct?
Yes, unless, well, I did get input since the last version was approved in 2016, but in previous years. So that input is reflected there, too. So just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you for providing more context. It's definitely helpful.
Thank you.
So how many meetings took place to inform, to inform this document that we have before us today?
I'd have to check, or no, I don't know if it's like a half dozen, or I have to check the subcommittee members. Are the number of meetings, is that?
Okay, so maybe four to six.
That's fair.
Okay. And were any of those meetings open to the public?
No, it's an ad hoc subcommittee, so they were not required to be open to the public, or not identified to be.
For sure, for sure. Was there any mechanism of public support, whether through our CBCs or any other business associations, or any other folks that we typically do some sort of outreach to? Was any of that made in this?
We followed the same course of action as the 2016 plan, so that answer would be no.
And do we know, I know it was made in mention in other colleagues' comments about how items in this violated state and potentially federal law. Do we have a list of the potential or the state and federal laws that were in violation from the 2016 priorities?
I would need to do more research to let you know.
Okay. And I know we do have the staff report here, and I really do appreciate that, just in terms of the overview, in terms of, you know, what we have here before us. I appreciate that. But was there a document that was shared with the public that kind of sort of summarized what was changing and why we were changing items that we're prioritizing?
In advance of this council meeting, no.
And the rationale for why CBCs or other outside groups were not included is primarily because the procedure from 2016 was followed today, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, we were following the direction of the subcommittee.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure it's clear for the public what's happening and how we got here. So that was my last question. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, you know, I say a lot, more than the status quo is possible. I am very grateful for the work that has been done, the work of the subcommittee, but I do think that there's definitely room for improvement in the terms of public engagement. That's been one of the things that I've really emphasized since I've been on this council. Really proud that we now have community budget workshops, really proud that we sustained our WebEx or virtual public engagement, really proud that we had unprecedented applications for committees, commissions, and boards this year. And we really, I mean, I think it should be the goal of our body to continue to have a really informed and responsive government. While I have a lot of respect for all of the things that prior councils have done that has brought the city to this moment, also, because two things can be true at the same time, I do think that there are ways that in 2024, we can honor and respect procedures and mechanisms that brought us to this point, and also honor and respect that there are opportunities to have more voices at the table, to be more responsive, to better utilize our wide range of committees, commissions, and boards, to have a process to really hear from folks. I'm even thinking about earlier this year, when we had a review of some of the city priorities and some of the areas that we were prioritizing, and we were in the senior center. All the department heads were there, the body was, it was open to the public, and it was specifically focused on ensuring that the city had an opportunity and community members had an opportunity to weigh in. Granted, it was during a workday, so there are issues with that and accessibility there, but there was a conscious effort from the city made earlier this year to ensure that the community had an opportunity to have a seat at the table as we informed how we were strategically planning and moving forward. So I think that's just an example of maybe a lesson learned, and I do think that that might have been a procedure that was modeled from the past as well, that could potentially inform this work as well. So while it seems like there is consensus to move forward with this document as is, I am really concerned that I heard a lot of questions from the public in terms of how we got here, why certain bodies were not consulted, and I just think that there is room for improvement based on what we've heard and based on, you know, just living on what we know. There've been several improvements of systems over this past year, and I hope that many of those continue. But, you know, it seems like there likely be a motion in a second to move forward with this item this evening, but I have several concerns with this, primarily just the lack of transparency in the process, the lack of feedback and consultation with the public, and that we're choosing to do that in the eve of a new council coming in just in our next session. So, you know, we'll continue to move forward, because while this is our last formal meeting, we'll have agendized items for this council. We will respect and honor the decisions of this council, because that is what we do. And, you know, I hope that as we move forward, we can continue to be open to new mechanisms, more transparency, more feedback and participation from our communities, as well as our committees, commissions, and boards, as we move forward and inform our legislative and policy platforms. And hopefully, there'll be an opportunity to revisit this document as well. So is there a motion from colleagues?
Mayor, can I just, one little quick thing?
Okay, sure.
I just, regarding the local control thing, I just wanted to, I pulled up the 2016, and in the strategies and actions on the first page, it says, "Take positions only on issues that clearly impact our city and/or are a threat to local control." So I just wanted to make sure that it's out front in the beginning. That's all, I just want to put that out. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, there's a motion by Vice Mayor O'Brien, a second by councilmember Erickson, to adopt a resolution approving the legislative and policy platform that guides the city's positions on state and federal legislation and rescinding Resolution Number 2016-R124. Please vote. All members have voted, and the motion passes three ayes, two noes. Noes from Mayor McMurray and councilmember Puzza.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll move now to continue public comment for items not on the agenda.
We have one speaker. It is Brian Sanders. I am going to... Mr. Sanders, you've been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Well, hi there. Thanks for hanging up with me tonight. I just wanted to share a couple things. I'm deeply troubled by the atmosphere of recent city council meetings and sessions of the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee. We uphold free speech. We also prohibit hate speech, speech that promotes hostility toward a group based on identity. And despite these policies, I've heard statements such as "Israel is committing genocide." I've heard "Zionism is racism." I've heard "Israel is an apartheid state." The phrases perpetuate harmful stereotypes targeting Jewish identity. Statements like "This is the United States of America, not the United States of Israel" aim to isolate Jewish Americans and suggest divided loyalty. Additionally, gatherings hosted by Jackson Market in partnership with Code Pink, a group known for inflammatory actions, have become platforms for encoded hate speech. Many might not fully grasp the implications of this language, and when such language is repeated in public meetings, it spreads misinformation and reinforces stereotypes that have led to Jewish marginalization. Recently, Code Pink and supporters began promoting a boycott of Israeli products at our local Trader Joe's, showing how these actions escalate into discriminatory policies. Speakers have even invoked the historical anti-Semitic blood libel as casual speech, and it is shocking that this passes the hate speech filter each time without being stopped or challenged by the city. Even tonight, one of the speakers was wearing a shirt that states "Zionism is racism." For months now, speakers have invoked the historical anti-Semitic blood libel as casual speech, and it is shocking that this passes the hate speech filter each time without being stopped or challenged by the city. The rhetoric in these chambers and the committee, ironically and sadly, the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee, fosters a hostile environment, making Jewish residents feel unwelcome and unsafe. And I urge the city to apply its hate speech policies uniformly, ensuring public forums are spaces where all members of our community feel respected and heard. Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Thank you. Any items or members? Councilmember Vera. Councilmember Erickson.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Puzza.
No, Mayor.
Nice, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Request to adjourn, please.
I'm sorry, did you say?
Request to adjourn.
Oh, okay. So do we have a motion? Sorry, can you do a voice vote, please? I mean, a voice motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by councilmember Vera and a second by Vice Mayor. Okay, we have a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien. Please vote. The time is 11:54. All members have voted, and we are indeed adjourned to December 9.